Welcome to the first hearing of the committee's inquiry into the feasibility of undergrounding the transmission infrastructure for renewable energy projects. I acknowledge the Gadigal people of the Our Nation, the traditional custodians on the lands on which we are meeting today. I pay my respects to elders past and present and celebrate the diversity of Aboriginal peoples in their ongoing cultures and connections to the lands and waters of New South Wales. I also acknowledge and pay my respects to any Aboriginal and Torres Strait Islander people joining us today. My name is Kate Fairman and I am Chair of the Committee. I ask everyone in the room to please turn their mobile phones to silent. Parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses in relation to the evidence they give today. However, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of the hearing. I urge witnesses to be careful about making comments to the media or to others after completing their evidence. In addition, the Legislative Council has adopted rules to provide procedural fairness for inquiry participants. I encourage committee members and witnesses to be mindful of these procedures. So, welcome, Mr. Brand, and thank you for making the time to give evidence. Could you please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation?
Thank you. My name is Les Brand. I'm the Managing Director of Amplitude Consultants. I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Would you like to begin by making an opening statement?
I would, thank you.
Thanks.
So, Madam Chair and committee members, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity for me to share my knowledge and experience and answer questions on HVDC and underground cables. My name is Les Brand and I have more than thirty years' experience in the industry, including twenty-four years on HVDC long-distance underground and subsea cables. Some examples of my experience include project engineer and operations manager for Directlink, Australia's first HVDC and fifty-six-kilometre-long underground cable in northern New South Wales, project manager and operations manager for Murraylink, a HVDC system between Victoria and South Australia, which is a hundred and eighty kilometres of underground cable. Key roles on major long-distance HVDC subsea and underground cable projects, including Basslink and Transbay Cable in California, the USA, and various roles for HVDC projects proposed and under development in Australia and overseas. I am internationally recognised as a leader of SIGRA and IEC working groups and committees on various topics, including installation, commissioning, operations, and maintenance of HVDC systems. I'd like to add to my opening remarks that I delivered during my testimony on the twenty-sixth of July, two thousand and twenty-three, in June in New South Wales. I'd like to start by acknowledging that the transition to renewables in Australia will necessarily require a significant unprecedented level of construction of high-voltage transmission to be completed to connect the often remote renewable energy sources to major load demand and demand centres. My experience in that of my company includes both AC and HVDC projects using overhead lines and underground or subsea cables. In some cases, the use of AC or HVDC overhead lines will be more appropriate, especially in cases where the benefits of spending the extra cost for undergrounding cannot be justified. I am of the view, however, that there will be cases where the additional capital costs of using underground cables can be justified, considering the benefits that could be realised at that particular location or for that particular project. There may also be technical and economic reasons to prefer long-distance HVDC and AC over AC, particularly where the distances between the renewable energy source and the load and demand are so far apart that an HVDC and/or underground solution may become the lower capital cost with the lower electrical losses. The technical assessment of AC versus HVDC and overhead versus underground must be undertaken in a balanced, fair, and structured way by professionals with knowledge and experience in these areas early in the process. It is true that HVDC underground cables have a longer design, manufacturing, and construction programme than an AC overhead line equivalent. However, around the globe, it is accepted that gaining easements and permitting for overhead transmission lines in some locations can result in lengthy delays, meaning that, in the end, HVDC underground projects can be built quicker. If HVDC underground is decided when the project was first proposed, a project was first proposed, I have no doubt the project would be commissioned sooner than the AC overhead line equivalent. This was the rationale behind the Murraylink project and the stated rationale for many long-distance underground HVDC projects currently underway connecting renewable energy sources in other countries. The reality is every project is unique. The concept, design, capital, and operating costs, construction, easement width, requirements for connections, all of these need to be determined for the various options, AC, HVDC, overhead, and underground, or a combination of these on a project-by-project basis. I accepted the invitation to appear here today because many points raised during the previous inquiry hearings and presented in recent submissions do not align with what I know and understand from my twenty-four-plus years of experience in HVDC projects, my recent activities undertaking AC versus HVDC studies, and my significant work in SIGRA and the IEC. I believe many of these statements derive from facts about AC cables rather than HVDC cables or about submarine cables rather than land cables. Many of the negatives presented for underground cables may apply to AC cables but not to HVDC transmission. In many cases, the case for the HVDC alternative is not stated. Topics include land cable fault finding, the time to repair a cable fault, the amount of spoil that needs to be removed from the trenches, the ground above underground cables do not need to be sterilised, and there is no requirement for a fifty-metre-wide trench. Requirements to tap in and out of HVDC projects. The reality is HVDC links are rated for maximum power in and maximum power out, perfect for transmitting large-scale renewables to the location of the load. In such cases, there is no capacity left to want to tap in. In terms of costing, firstly, an underground HVDC option will be more expensive than an AC overhead option. That is a fact. The question is, could the additional cost be justified through other technical and non-technical benefits? I've heard a lot about the cost of HVDC projects, what it includes and what it doesn't, and that the presented costs that we've come up with in previously do not take into account recent increases in costs. This is not correct. Our estimates take into account an approximate thirty to thirty-five per cent increase in the cost of HVDC and underground cables over the past twenty-four months. And even using the most conservative construction and terrain assumptions, we can produce a HVDC underground option for as low as one point five times the current published cost of HUMLINK AC overhead option. Finally, I've seen various comments about underground HVDC cables being worse for the environment than the AC overhead transmission lines. I'd like to remind the committee that the Murraylink HVDC cable between Victoria and South Australia, which is a hundred and eighty kilometres long, was constructed within a four-metre-wide construction corridor and won a Case Earth Environmental Award for environmental innovation. Thank you again for the opportunity to appear here today.
Thank you so much, Mr. Brand. We'll go to questions from the opposition, starting with Mr. Westphal.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Good to see you again, and thank you for, again, making time to provide evidence to the committee. Mr. Brand, since the time when the committee previously reported, there's been a report released that you've, I guess, indicated in your opening statements somewhat. Can you provide a little bit of a breakdown as to how that report has provided more clarity and more detailed analysis in relation to the costings? And what it is that was, I guess, different to reports that the committee had previously viewed, such as the GHD report, that allowed a further refining of the cost profile that was provided to as evidence?
Right, okay. So, in that report, we were asked to produce two alternative HVDC underground alternatives. One of them was based on one of the technical options presented in the GHD report. I would like to point out that the technical solutions that were presented in that report, we agree with, and the costing of the HVDC converters, we agree with. So, we produced an alternative. Now, the alternative takes into account, it was stated in the GHD report that they were advised, presumably by AMO, I think by AMO, that the HUMLINK could accept a seven-hundred-megawatt loss in the event of a single credible contingency outage. Okay? Previous versions in the report were either M minus one or N minus a half, right? So, what we did was we applied the seven-hundred-megawatt allowable loss, and we produced a slightly smaller converter station with cables. We used our software to determine how big those cables should be, and then we actually developed our costing based on how we cost HVDC projects over the many years that we've done that. So, in the end, it all comes down to the cable construction cost. We don't agree with it. We never did. In my previous testimony, I advised that we felt that the cost per kilometre in that report was significantly high. So, what we've done is we've taken our approach that we apply, and we've come up with an alternative number, and that's how we get the lower number.
Okay. In relation to the profile of costings, how have you managed the, I'll say, civil works for that project as you've costed? Is there an analysis of different ways with which you might underground, as in whether it be a cut-and-fill solution, or whether it be with the use of tunnelling machines? Or have you looked at other options around the way with which the cables are laid in the ground, and has that provided you an opportunity to see the difference in costings? And whether there's a mix of solutions that could be put into the project?
The short answer is no. We assume cut and lay the whole way. That is a slower method. So, what we tried to do was create, to some degree, a worst-case construction scenario. Our method is to actually calculate the width of the trench, and then based on cubic metres and construct excavation rates and remediation rates to come up with, you know, a bottom-up civil cost. The reality is, a project of this length will have some horizontal directional drills along the way. But at this preliminary costing kind of level, concept design costing, we assume that gets balanced out with the fact that a long-distance project like this will necessarily require innovative ways of trenching and innovative ways of laying the cable.
Okay. So, is it fair to say, then, that the costings that you provided in relation to the civil works would be what you consider a worst-case scenario?
It's in the higher end, correct. And we assumed some pretty harsh terrain conditions, and also, I wouldn't say rock all the way, but we had some pretty high assumptions regarding things like the hardness of the soil.
Okay. So, there is perhaps an opportunity for further technological advances in civil works, such as horizontal drilling, to provide a speed and cost efficiency saving in relation to what you've proposed here?
Correct. And in my previous testimony, I'm pretty sure I mentioned that every long-distance underground cable project will necessarily, at the start, require establishment of an innovative, efficient way to trench and install based on the limitations of the project. So, again, the Murraylink is a good example. We had a four-metre-wide corridor, and at that time, we engaged an experienced gas pipeline cable lane company to come up with a method to stay within that corridor.
Now, Mr. Brand, I'm pretty sure you were familiar with the previous inquiry, and you would have been following its progress as we had hearings, et cetera. You would have heard that there's concern that perhaps the undergrounding of a project like HUMLINK might create a delay in the approval and also in relation to the actual physical work. Mr. Brand, I imagine you've had some experience in discussions with landowners and the like. Can you provide some insights to what your view is in relation to how landholders might have a view around undergrounding versus what they might have in relation to disruption of their farm operations with overhead as proposed with HUMLINK?
The people that I've spoken to, without exception, have been fully supportive of undergrounding. I believe they're aware of the construction corridor that is required. But I think there's an understanding, I believe there's an understanding, that that construction corridor is a very, very short-term issue. And you've got to remember that the construction moves as somewhat of a front. We call it a construction front. So, it'll be in one particular location for a matter of weeks before it then moves on to the next. So, my feeling is there's an acceptance that, I guess, short-term pain for long-term gain.
Yep. And in the dealings you've had with landholders looking at this project, is it fair to say that you've explained those impacts to them and explained also issues such as the width of easements? The projects that can occur above the corridor once the project has been laid, i.e. can they continue to save farm and have pasture above it? We've heard differing evidence, you know, previously and during the last inquiry as to what can be done above where the cables are run. Has there been feedback to you on those issues as well?
Yeah, well, there's been various comments made about what can grow above the cable and what cannot. I can speak to my experience that, for the, remember, and I think a lot of people forget this. Australia once had, still has, but it was once the longest underground cable in the world, eight hundred and eighty kilometres. Only recently was that record knocked off its perch. But I can say that there are areas along there, there are areas along there where we've put the cable in a fire break, but in the areas where it is not, you actually need a machine to actually go and find a detector to actually go and find where the cable is. You can't see it with your eyes. And that's because the grasses and the natural shrubs will just grow over it. So, this idea of sterilising above the cable, I do not support for these long-distance HVDC cables, yeah?
Yep. I appreciate I'm flying through a lot of these issues. I'm trying to cover off all of the negatives that we've heard previously that has, I guess, been rolled out as excuses as to why undergrounding can't occur. I think we've covered off a lot of those now. I guess I want to drill down on to the capacity of the line that you've, with your, I guess, experience, costed. And looking at some of the other issues that came up during the previous inquiry, where we heard that the overhead AC system allows further tapping in and out of it because, in effect, you know, an AC-to-AC system doesn't require those converter stations. Whereas where you have your DC line, each end of the DC line requires a converter station. If you're to tap into a DC line for another project, you require another converter station. Now, that was part of the, I guess, part of the argument that was made in previous hearings, that the ability to tap in and out of HUMLINK will provide opportunities further on down the track. But can you provide some, I guess, clarity around if a converter station is required to tap into a DC system, for whatever reason, into the future? How might that work? What impact would it have? What cost impact would it have should that requirement into the future be on the table?
So, if you wanted to add, if you wanted to tap into a HVDC system, you are going to need to build another converter, usually a smaller one, but still, you know, it will be a high cost. We haven't had a project in the world where one's been retroactively added, but it is possible, but with technical challenges. So, we call them multi-terminal HVDC links. The multi-terminal HVDC links that do exist were designed to be so at the start. For example, there's one in Scotland, Caithness Moray HVDC system. But I take it back to the general misunderstanding is when you try to use HVDC as a one-to-one replacement for AC. HVDC has, it's a solution to get bulk power from point A to a load area at point B. And if you've got two gigawatts coming in at point A, and you've built a two-gigawatt HVDC system, there's no more capacity anyway to want to tap in. Now, that's a very different situation to how all of us in the power industry have grown up with AC transmission, where we have smaller loads and smaller generators connecting at various locations. So, a situation where you already have two or three gigawatts of power in one location, you would size your HVDC link to those two or three gigawatts, and you'd transmit it all the way. The analogy I use is the highway bypass. And this is the concept that's being applied by other countries who are faced with the same problem, how to get all of this power from one location a long distance to another location.
I think you've pretty much answered the next question that I was going to ask, which is what I was hoping we would get to, which is that is part of the support for an overhead AC system possibly due to the fact that it allows the additional capacity to tap in and out that the DC doesn't? Because you effectively sized the cables, you sized the system with the converter stations for the planned load, the design load, in effect, that you will have. So, for example, if you have a res that you are connecting to a major load, which would be, you know, a metropolitan area, you can't then create another res further on down the track and tap it directly in because the system itself won't have the capacity to accept the extra power. Is it that the flexibility that AC might provide is more important to the grid system than the actual transmission of that power itself from one location to another? I.e., do you think that there is a business case that's built into HUMLINK to have an AC overhead system that will allow further tapping in and out of it into the future?
Look, I can't really answer that. I think that the reason why an AC overhead line is supported is because it will pass the current regulatory processes. It's the cheapest solution, and that is pretty much what the current processes are set up for. What we have to remember is when, and we will eventually be using HVDC in this manner, when this happens by shunting the power from point A to point B, you're freeing capacity in the AC network that's parallel to it, okay? So, the argument for the flexibility, it's a different way of thinking. It's a different way of planning the network, right? So, it's shunting power from point A to point B, free up the adjacent AC network, and then if you want to connect a one-hundred-megawatt solar farm or something like that, you connect it in the freed-up network. Whether they use the flexibility of being able to tap in as a part of the justification, I don't know the answer to that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Brand, I just wondered if you could talk us through some of the workings of the report in a bit more detail into the costings. My first question is just around the loss, and you're kind of saying that, like, that's a significant component in terms of the costings differential. Could you explain, in layperson's terms, if you can, how is loss factored in financially in terms of the cost, I understand, of operation and maintenance going forward? Could you just break that down for the committee in terms of why that is an actual cost? And the question is around loss, you know, seven-hundred megawatts of loss. What is the cost? I'm trying to work that out. It's a non-engineer's question?
So, any transmission line, AC or DC, will experience electrical loss, okay? So, whatever you inject in one end of the transmission line, the megawatts on the other end will be lower, okay? So, if you had an interconnector, for example, and you were buying power in one region, you were buying a hundred megawatts, you'd only be selling ninety-five megawatts. So, in that example, that's actually a real cost. I'm not an expert in the machinations of the NIM, but if you were to buy power from one generator and then sell it into another location or transmit it to another location, there will be some megawatts that you've paid for that you won't be delivering to a customer.
Got you. Thank you. That's actually very clear and actually very simple. I was wondering as well with the, one second, I'm just trying to find it. This is in the undergrounding report that you've prepared. On page five, you state that this is a disappointment around the fact that the two-way-one option was not considered. And again, this is about the, you know, which allows for a loss of seven-hundred megawatts. You've got in brackets there, "as apparently advised by AMO to transgrid GHD as being acceptable during the study." Would you care to explain to the committee what that means in terms of AMO saying to transgrid that that was acceptable during the study?
Yeah, look, we've taken that from part of the GHD report. So, originally, so it looks like they looked at an A option, which is an N minus one. They looked at a B option, which is an N minus a half, which means you lose one pole of a converter. You lose fifty per cent. That's called N minus a half. But then there are some options where they produced a C option, and the C option takes into account this loss of seven-hundred megawatts. The disappointment was that the option twos, which is fully underground HVDC, they did not produce a C option. So, we've had a go at not only designing a C option using the same principles as the GHD report, but then costing it up using our method.
Because this is, you've also, again, talking about losses. You've got this Amplitude Zone loss estimates of HVDC versus AC options show the HVDC losses to always be lower, and in some cases, up to twenty-four per cent lower than the AC options. This is just a really important point for the committee to get their heads around. You've also just talking, you highlight here just operating costs in general. If you wanted to just expand upon that to the committee in terms of why that's so important and why it might have skewed GHD's costings?
No, no worries. So, for the losses, So for the losses, the, the GHD report just provides dollar values, not megawatts. So there's no way we can try and figure out how they calculated those losses, right? So, but the results are that the, the loss costs are more for HVDC than there are for AC. And this goes against the generally accepted principle that losses in a HVDC system are lower than an AC system. But because we were unable to, there was no megawatt number for us to, to, to drill down into, we couldn't really, we had to try and come up. We, we have our own calculator for calculating HVDC losses. The, the second part about operating costs, and this is quite important. So in my background, I've developed the O and M budgets for Directlink, Murraylink, Transbay Cable in the US. And I'm currently heading up the International Working Group on Operation and Maintenance of HVDC. And the, the, the numbers that are in here are extraordinarily high compared to any of those projects and anything that I'm familiar with. And so in here, we've tried to kind of break out what we, what we think. We took the published costs for Murraylink and Directlink and tried to say, well, you know, if you take those into account, then multiply it by three, because they're twice, three times as many converters, then you should be looking at numbers like this. And if I recall, they were significantly below the, 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 the numbers that were put in there. So if you, if, if you've overestimated your annual costs and then you put it, you compare projects in terms of lifecycle cost, it will again skew it towards the AC overhead option rather than the HVDC underground.
Thank you. Mr. Brand, you're a joint recipient of the 2020 National Professional Electrical Engineer of the Year Award from Engineers Australia, aren't you?
Correct.
How many engineers, how many members of Engineers Australia are there?
I don't know. I can't answer that. But pretty much every engineer I'm, I know is a member.
So I know that some people will say that because there's never been a 500 KV line buried underground for this long, for example, in terms of HUMLINK, then we shouldn't do it. That's reason enough not to do it. What's your view on that?
If we're talking 500 KV AC, the numbers are, are pretty, pretty high. Okay? So a lot of the comments that you see negatives.
Do you mean the costings when you say the numbers?
The, the capital cost numbers, right? So undergrounding 500 KV at long distance is very expensive and it will lead to the kind of construction corridors that you've heard other people talking about. And every 30 kilometres, 40 kilometres or so, you're going to need to build a, a separate yard with, with a lot of equipment in it. So I wouldn't necessarily say the reason would be that it's never been done before. I think the reason is more that for AC 500 KV, for that kind of distance, it wouldn't make sense. You'd have, you'd, you'd go to HVDC at that point.
And then just to be clear, and then I'll throw to my colleague. So then when you're saying then you'd have to go to HVDC at that point, what's the difference between what you've just talked about in terms of the AC and the HVDC then?
So HVDC does not require any compensation along the length. So technically, I'm sure you would have seen in the media, people are talking about 4,000-kilometre-long HVDC cables without any compensation along the, along the length. So there are technical reasons why that's the case.
And so just again, I'm going to jump in, compensation is in what capacity are you saying that compensation?
Large reactors.
Thank you.
Large reactors in a fence yard.
Thank you.
So quite significant. And this is why in many cases, if it's a subsea cable where the practicality of having these along the route, you have to build a platform, that, that's why for subsea cables, HVDC is almost always selected, particularly if it's over 30, 40 kilometres. Yeah, so.
Actually, just one, and just what about capacity? One of the things we're hearing as well is just the expertise in this country, the availability of what's needed to lay HVDC and the time. I know the minister keeps saying that if we went with undergrounding, HUMLINK, for example, it would be four to five, it would take four to five years longer. What's your view on that?
If you started the project right now, if you decided to go underground with HUMLINK right now, it will be a four to five year process because you're pretty much starting again. The, the underground option has been investigated now for, I understand, about two years. So, you know, and prior to that, there was a lot of development in the overhead AC option. So one of the points that I raise in, in my submission is that if you, if you wait three, four years and then decide to go HVDC underground, then yes, there will be a delay to the project. But if you assess underground HVDC fairly at the start of the project, without these one-off statements from reports in Google and things like that, that, that I'm seeing in the industry, if you assess it fairly and you decide to go HVDC underground, then HVDC underground will be built for the AC overhead line. I'm confident of that.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Mr. Rod Roberts.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Mr. Brand, for your submission and your time here today. Very quickly, Murraylink at the time was the largest capacity, longest distance underground power-moving cable, correct?
Correct.
In Australia?
In, yeah.
We've heard from proponents of overhead power at the moment, providing resistance towards HUMLINK being underground, simply because it's never been done before. We've never had any of that capacity, we've never gone that distance before. Was there similar reluctance to Murraylink at the time?
I'd say no, because we built it as a private company. We, so I, I was the project manager of that project and the decision for us to go underground HVDC was one that we knew we could build that at the time in two to three years. And we knew if we tried to build an overhead transmission line, we would not get the permitting and consents. I, I recall at the time, we were looking at six to seven years. So, so schedule was actually a big part of the, the project. Technical risk, we, we, we were an experienced company. We managed the technical risk associated with it being the, the highest voltage at the time and the longest distance.
Fine. You've just asked, answered my next question, and that was why was undergrounding chosen for Murraylink, but you've answered that. We hear from opponents of underground that if there's faults underground, it'll, it'll take forever to find them and locate them and that. Can you tell me this with Murraylink, has there been any issues or faults and/or locating those faults that have taken it offline for any extensive period of time at all?
There have been cable faults on Murraylink. I believe that's a matter of public record. However, I have seen some submissions that have used Sigray failure statistics, that calculated them to get seemingly, yeah, ridiculous numbers. Yep. Murraylink is 360 kilometres a cable. I believe it's failed twice post-trial period. If you work out those formulas, you, you will get a very, very low, much lower failure rate to what I've seen in the submissions. Yeah. I also want to point out while we're talking about that is the submission is referring to Directlink and using public record on Directlink failure rates. I've seen those in there and I'm familiar with them. But we have to remember that Directlink was actually the very first polymer HVDC cable in the world. There was a lot of learnings from Directlink. I was the project engineer and the operations manager for that one as well. That is not an appropriate reference in, in my view, in, if, if you're going to work out failure rates for the, the technology that's developed over the last two decades.
Certainly, we've come a long way, haven't we?
Yeah, we have.
Just quickly to your submission page two, and I wasn't on the first inquiry, but we heard evidence at the inquiry on the 18th of July saying that be a requirement for a 50-metre-wide trench or words similar to an Olympic pool-sized trench, et cetera. Where could they possibly have got that assessment from?
I, I believe what was meant was a 50-metre-wide construction corridor, only because even the GHD report published on TransGrid's website doesn't, doesn't refer to those kind of trench widths. However, it was said that a 50-metre-wide trench and with HVDC, you're probably looking at a couple of metres per circuit. With AC, that'll probably go out to, you know, three or four metres per circuit.
But certainly no any 50s.
Not 50-metre-wide trenches, no.
And, and one last question, Chair, thanks. Again, evidence heard on the 18th of July was that it was, the undergrounding option could be up to 10 times more expensive. Do you know where they got the evidence to actually make that sort of statement?
Look, I thi, I think the, the genesis of the 10 times, which is quite often repeated and replicated, is in the case where you're trying to underground with AC cables. Because the, you, you need multiple cables for the same amount of power. And as I mentioned before, the higher the voltage, you're going to need these reactive compensation stations. So whether it's 10 times or, you know, eight times or 12 times, th, those numbers probably will, will align if you choose AC underground. And this is where the, the, the concept of HVDC underground needs to be considered because you can get those numbers down too, as our report shows as low as 1.5 times. If you throw a whole lot of other things in there, maybe two times. But yeah, it's not 10 times.
Because what we're talking about here is taking power from its generation source down in the snowy mountains and taking it up to Bannaby to the, to the substation there.
Correct.
So really, we're just moving it from one spot to another.
Yep.
And hence your recommendation or your proposal perhaps that HVDC is the way to go on this particular project.
In project and projects like it, where, again, I, I use the highway bypass analogy. You just shunt the power from as much power as you can push into one end and you push it out the other. No need to take it out halfway along, no need to add to it halfway along.
Fine. That's all I have, Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just jump in with one last question. In terms of withstanding bushfires underground cabling, I, I have read that they can still suffer due to the heat during bushfires. Has there been any experience of cabling and how it has survived bushfires in Australia that you're, you're aware of? And could you speak to that?
I.
Or not survived, I should say?
I, I don't have any, any, any experience in that. But as someone that works in the industry, I've never heard of it.
Okay.
A HVDC cable being impacted by a, a bushfire above ground.
Okay, yeah, overhead of course, as we saw, there's a transgrid report, are you aware of that report, that, that the impact of the Black Summer bushfires on TransGrid's network was quite extensive?
Yes, but it's not, it's not something I've delved into, yeah.
That's okay. My time is up. We've got a question from government members, Ms. Emily Savile.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks so much for appearing again today, Mr. Brand. How many underground transmission projects have you worked on in Australia?
Two.
Two? And what were those projects?
Directlink and Murraylink.
Have you worked on any underground 500-kilovolt transmission lines in Australia?
AC.
Underground 500-kilovolt transmission lines in Australia? What were the distances of the transmission lines that you referred to that you've worked on, that were the underground ones?
So one is 56 kilometres and the other is 180 kilometres.
And what kilo, what kilovolt?
KV.
Yep.
80 KV for the, the first one, built, commissioned in 2000, and 150 KV commissioned in 2003.
Okay. What expertise is there in Australia in building 500-kilovolt underground transmission lines, would you say?
I'd say none. And probably not in the world either.
Okay. If this has never been done before in Australia and indeed there's limited evidence in the world, what is your evidence based on?
Which, which part of the evidence?
The, the evidence, your, so your report that you've commissioned.
Global experience with HVDC and the fact that every HVDC project has, is necessarily a higher voltage. So when we built Directlink, no one had built an 80 KV before. When we built Murraylink, no one had built a 150 KV before. When I was over in Transbay Cable in California, no one had built a 200 KV before. So every project is necessarily going to be bigger. So they're currently talking about 525 KV projects that are being developed in Australia and 320 KV projects that are being developed in Australia, and we're working on those projects.
And how wide would the trenches need to be for 500-kilovolt underground transmission lines?
HVDC, approximately 1.5 metres.
And how wide would the land easements need to be?
Well, it depends how wide apart, how far apart you want to put those cables. So in terms of the mutual heating effect of cables, so to kind of answer your question about the 500 KV, is there, there's acceptable software that we use in the industry to actually calculate, you know, the heat in the cable. So when you go up in voltage, you go down in current. When you go down in current, you can actually put more power through, right? Which is, which is the concept between going from 320 to 525. There is a mutual heating effect that you do need to take into account. Our view is that's a couple of metres, but practically you may want to space the cables further apart so you can actually get access to them during construction where you excavate them, find the fault, dig it up, put it back in.
So the easement may in fact be more or?
Yeah, I think we said something of the order of 20 metres in our report.
And what material do you use to line these trenches?
The, the answer is it depends. So Directlink and Murraylink, we didn't use any other material. In fact, in Murraylink, we, we use screens to screen the material to get a soft bedding soil using the natural spoil around the cable. When you, so effectively the material that you put around the cable depends on the thermal resistivity characteristics of, of where you're putting it in.
So if it was a 500 KV cable, for example, what material would you use?
The principles are the same, whether it's 500 or 320 or whatever. So you'd, in your calculation, in your modeling, you'd put a thermal resistivity value in there. We use 1.5 as a value. Now, when you go out and you actually measure it, you may find there are areas where 1.5 is not, where, where you're actually measuring higher, in which case you may put in known thermal resistivity backfill. I have seen parts of the report where they say you replace the whole trench with that backfill. I, I don't support that. You can actually replace a, a, an area around the cable.
Sure. If you undergrounded a 500-kilovolt transmission project, what infrastructure would you need above ground to connect renewable projects along the route?
HVDC, you'd need converter stations at each end.
How long would it take to build a 360-kilometre-long 500-kilovolt transmission line?
Overhead line?
In, in general?
Okay. So I believe I said five to six years, four to five years, sorry, four to five years.
This is for undergrounding?
Yeah.
And the maintenance of underground transmission lines, it, does it cost more when you compare it to overhead and how long does it take compared to overhead?
No. But if you're using AC, and, and this is what in my opening remarks, I commented how there's a lot of statements that are made about AC. AC, you need access to the joints and you need to go and inspect them and take measurements, right? You don't need to do that for DC cables. So in fact, on Murraylink, all the joint bays are actually buried completely. There are no pits that you have to go and visit.
So, but, but specifically, does it cost more?
No.
And how long does it take?
For a HVDC cable, I would go and drive the route. I'd, I'd check for anyone excavating in the area or I'd check to make sure no one's taken any of our cable markers and signs.
Would you say it's a shorter or a longer period of time as opposed to?
Shorter.
Overhead AC? Okay. Your submission says that apart from deep-rooted trees, farming and cropping can occur above underground transmission lines. Are you aware of Oicon's recent study which showed you cannot have deep-rooted crops within easement areas for underground lines?
Yeah, the term deep-rooted is, is being used a lot. I'm not a farmer, so I don't know what deep-rooted crops actually means. But for us, we've always referred to deep-rooted as being trees. So maybe they're talking about orchards? I have read that report, yeah.
So do you, do you acknowledge that grazing and cropping is typically permitted below overhead transmission lines?
Possibly, if you've got the right clearances. Possibly, if you've got the right clearances.
Um, there is a lot of dispute about the cost of undergrounding. Do you accept that you're one of the few to say the cost is only marginally more? And that a seeming majority of experts have shown that the costs of undergrounding is significantly higher?
I accept that my costs are in line with those that are actually building projects elsewhere. Um, and I can't comment on how others come up with their costing.
Thanks. I'll now turn to my colleague for some additional questions.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks, Mr Brand.
Just want to grab the microphones.
Oh, sorry. Uh, Mr Brand, you said earlier, excuse me, earlier that if the underground proposal had been advanced from the beginning, that it could have been, uh, completed within a certain timeframe. And I'm just wondering whether that timeframe included what would need to have been done by way of amendment to the national electricity law under which the regulatory framework sits.
No, it, it would not.
Um, are you able, uh, to tell us what sort of processes are involved in amending the national electricity law and the regulatory framework that sits under it?
I'm not an expert in national electricity law, but I am familiar with the RITI process. Okay, and the RITI process requires that the, the, um, the net market benefits, the higher net market benefits get selected, which technically means, um, usually means the, the lowest cost option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'm just wondering, did you get a chance to look at the transgrid evidence from the last occasion? And particularly the evidence they gave about the risks to the network if HUMLink wasn't completed on schedule?
No, I did not.
Yeah. Um, they broadly speaking, and you'd have much more understanding than me of what they said, uh, if you looked at it, but are they broadly speaking said that there were serious risks to the stability of the network and electricity provision if HUMLink wasn't completed on time? As a broad proposition, do you agree with that?
There is, I, as I said in my opening, there is a need to build transmission. And we understand that a lot of transmission needs to be built in a, a period of time. The, the one thing, so we, we look at AC overhead transmission versus HVDC underground transmission. We, we're not looking at things like the timing of snowy, um, where, where the power is coming from at, at the other end. Um, that's presumably being addressed by others.
Yeah.
Right? So wh- when, when I get involved in things like this, I'm, my, my role is to try and get the facts out there about HVDC, about undergrounding. Um, and, um, and I feel a need to appear at an inquiry like this because of some of the things that I'm, I see being said in the public domain. But it's not my role to determine when snowy is going to be completed and what is, um, what is the required timing for HUMLink.
Yeah. Um, so you accept, don't you, that because, uh, undergrounding was not advanced from the beginning, that there would be considerable delay if that method of construction was adopted?
Do we have the latest delivery date for the AC overhead option?
Um, I don't have it at hand, so.
So my estimate would be if we, if we all decided today to go HVDC underground, you would probably be looking at twenty twenty-nine, twenty thirty.
Yeah. Um, excepting that at least on the previous estimate when we were here last time, that that was considerable delay in terms of the construction time, you're not able to comment on what that would mean in terms of the risk factors that have been pointed to by transgrid, are you?
No.
Because that's not within your remit?
No.
Yeah. So the thing that, that I'm struggling with, to be frank, is how could we recommend the undergrounding proposal in circumstances where it wouldn't on the current regulatory framework be approved? Are you able to assist us on that?
No, that's, that's not my area either.
It's not your remit?
No.
Yeah. So, you know, I think, I think there are, there are, there are two, two issues at play here. There's the immediate issue of HUMLink and then there's the, what do we do about the next one? Right?
Yeah.
And I feel that if, if hu- if it is too late for HUMLink to go undergrounding, and it's not my, my position to say whether it is or isn't, that certainly when you start looking at the next transmission lines, we need to make sure that we are assessing AC versus DC, underground versus overhead early in the process. Yeah. Because one of the reasons why many projects around the world in the private sector is going to HVDC right up front is because everyone believes, and I believe, that it will be built quicker than an AC overhead transmission option. Yeah. So presumably on the basis of the opinions that you've expressed, you would at least now be against the decisions of the previous government that advanced the above grounding proposal?
Sorry, I don't understand the question.
He's trying to stitch us up.
Yeah.
So for example, I'm talking about things like the previous government approving above grounding through Cozyosco National Park and other steps such as not financially contributing to an undergrounding proposal in order that the regulator could have approved the project. If you could go back in time, your, uh, opinion would be against those decisions.
Y- I guess, yes.
Yeah. And those decisions having been taken as they were, you're not able to speak to the risk to electricity provision if we were now to change tack?
No, no. Can I, do you mind if I add?
Sure, please.
Right, yeah. That the, um, the, the issue that's on the table here, and my understanding is one of the reasons for the inquiry, is we, we need to look at what needs to change so that we can start looking at fairly HVDC, underground or overhead, remember you can do AC HVDC overhead as well. AC, HVDC, underground, overhead, early in the process and justify potentially any additional costs.
Yeah.
But the current processes don't allow for that. And HVDC technology does provide quite a number of technical benefits to the network that, um, currently are not taken into account in the current process.
Yeah. So, so on the basis of the decisions that have been made to date, including the lack of financial contribution to undergrounding and accepting the regulatory framework and accepting that, uh, the risks are not within your expertise, do you accept that it may well just be too late to progress the undergrounding proposal in respect of HUMLink?
I'd say that's not, it, it's not mine to say. I can only tell you when I think we would be able to have a HVDC underground option.
Yeah.
And then it's up to other parties that are looking at the timing of renewables and reses and snowy to determine whether that will be too late.
Yeah. Uh, and your expertise is on the construction aspect of HUMLink rather than how HUMLink fits into the bigger picture.
Correct.
Uh, which the risks, um, obviously lie in that area particularly.
I would say my expertise sits in long distance underground trans, power, power transmission.
Yeah.
And as, as I've said, the reason why I've, I've agreed to, to appear here is to actually make sure that the facts about HVDC and the facts about underground transmission are presented.
Yeah, okay. Uh, so it may well be upon our assessment of those other factors such as risk and the related factor of timing, that we have no choice but to recommend against the undergrounding proposal. You certainly can't exclude that, can you?
That's a possible outcome, yeah.
Would you like to do the last?
Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Do you want to use the last few seconds?
You don't really have any few seconds. It's, it's twelve o'clock. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr Brand for coming again. I recognise it's your second appearance before, uh, not this committee, but on this issue to an up-house inquiry, uh, in, uh, a number of months. I appreciate your, um, evidence and, uh, we'll now call the next witness. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Piper, can you hear us okay? Mr Piper, can you hear us? That might be a no. Just won't need to. Mr Piper, can you hear? Just wait a second.
Can you, you can see us, can you hear us?
Hi, can you hear us, Mr Piper?
You might. Yeah, we can't hear you. Um, can we just check that you're unmuted?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, yes, can you hear us?
Yes, got your file.
Okay, wonderful. All right, let's kick, uh, off. Thank you very much, Mr Piper. We'll get you, uh, sworn in firstly. So if you could, uh, please state your name and position, title. Do you have, uh, the, uh, words in front of you for either an oath or an affirmation?
I did have.
Yep, otherwise I can read it out for you. Are you doing, would you like to take the oath or the affirmation?
Affirmation, please, ma'am.
Okay, so if you'd just state your name and position, title first, and then I'll get you to repeat, repeat it after me.
Yeah, Grant Piper, I'm, um, Chair of Uarbitang Elaine Alliance, uh, and the National Rational Energy Network.
Thank you. So if you repeat after me, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly confirm.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
That the evidence now about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Excellent, thank you. Um, Mr Piper, do you have a short opening statement to make?
Yeah, I have some prepared, um,
Thank you.
documents here, so.
Go ahead.
I'd start with that. Okay, thanks for commencing the new inquiry into undergrounding. Um, I noted the dissenting reports from the previous quayme and, and thanks for that. I, I noted the main report focused largely on the human transmission line. Um, while in many other cities of the state to be innately affected by transmission lines, such as us in the CWO res, got little mention. Um, we've got compulsory acquisition commencing this week, uh, drilling machines, bulldozers are moving and all prior to the project EIS being reviewed or approved. There is no procedural fairness in this and we feel the CWO res will be forced through before any sensible review of policy occurs, which will then wind back construction in other reses. In short, I think we will be built over for no other reason but to save face and to give time to redirect a narrative as reality of the, um, situation the state's in starts to bite. Re-undergrounding transmission using high voltage DC would alleviate many key problems such as direct routing, visual amenity, property devaluation, large easements, EMF and firefighting. Most landowners would welcome this change. There's been no substantiative change to the situations given in my previous submission to the inquiry. I simply recommend that they are reviewed. My new submission to this inquiry repeats what I submitted to the EnergyCo CWO res EIS, as this is fundamental to our problem, I, I think. Uh, undergrounding does not address these key flaws of the whole scheme, which, uh, I'd like to read from the submission to the EnergyCo EIS, which I submitted to this inquiry. Uh, industrial wind, solar, pumped hydro and the enabling powerline infrastructure will forever spoil productive farmland and decrease food production and thus food security. People need clean food right to grave before they need supposedly clean power. The energy consumed in the mining, transport, manufacture, installation of industrial wind, solar batteries, micro-pumped hydro and power lines is provided by oil, gas, nuclear and predominantly coal. Consumption of these limited resources will increase, not decrease, because of the installation of these inefficient generators. The building of more wind, solar and power lines to provide energy to build more wind, solar and power lines is a daisy chain of delusion due to their inefficiency and energy loss at every step, as per the second law of thermodynamics. With wind turbines only delivering twenty-nine percent of their installed capacity, and that's AMO data from twenty twenty-two, a grossly inefficient way to produce bulk power. The embedded energy and materials in them and the infrastructure needed to connect them to the grid make them expensive environmentally and expensive per kilowatt produced, such that they are counterproductive to the stated aim of reducing emissions. That is, they cause more harm than good to the planet and power prices will not fall. Added to this is the massive local and direct environmental damage caused. The same statement can be made for solar and it, it only delivers twenty percent of its installed capacity based on AMO data, so it's actually worse. Pardon? And the relatively short life of industrial wind and solar and especially batteries is acknowledged as less than twenty-five years. This means they must be replaced, which occurs, incurs a whole new cycle or continuous cycle of energy and materials resource consumption with the attendant emissions. Battery storage is listed for the Marathry Substation in the Central West Res and internal to many of the proposed wind and solar projects in the res. Batteries don't produce any power at all and consume huge amounts of energy and resources to produce. So the economic and environmental cost to Australia and the world of using them is greater than even for wind and solar. Once again, the use yields a net result that is counterproductive to the stated aim. And I note that, uh, the energy operator has also lists and the latest subsidies from both state and federal government. Um, there's a frequency controlled ancillary services market, which isn't talked about much. But basically, it's throwing money at generators that can provide, um, immediate and short term backup to the grid in a synchronous manner. So they've recognised the problem, they're going to throw money at it and that will result in gas turbine and diesel generators being plugged into the grid and being paid by high supposedly market rates to, to support the renewables. I'll go on. Micro-pumped hydro sites have been identified all over the state, some in the Central West Res. Pumped hydro suffers from many of the same problems as wind and solar. All the low hanging fruit of hydro in Australia has been built. Australia is mostly flat, we do not have large mountains or reliable rainfall or snow. The cost of small pumped hydro is exorbitant for the limited storage and power delivery capacity and incurs a large local environmental cost. Hydrogen production is also floated as an energy storage solution. Converting water to hydrogen via electrolysis takes a lot of energy and requires access to a lot of water. It's about eighty percent efficient. You need about fifty kilowatt of electricity to get a kilogram of hydrogen. Water is often in short supply in Australia and food production will suffer if water is taken from it to make hydrogen. Overbuilding wind and solar to provide capacity to produce green hydrogen is being promoted. And you can see that in the Central West Res where we've gone from three gigawatt an ounce initially and they're now talking about twenty gigawatt of, uh, installed capacity for us. The CSI Gen Cost Report admits all powerline infrastructure and associated expenses prior to twenty thirty. This is not useful for decision-making and is misleading. The true cost to Australian citizens of building the AMO ISP is unaffordable and the stated goals of providing cheap and reliable electricity can never be realised in this way. Much expert commentary analysis has taken place on this topic over the last year. All wind and solar generation needs backup to achieve the ninety-nine point eight percent reliability goal, the historically accepted standard for First World Mainz Power. This forces baseload thermal power to operate off its design point to cater for variable wind and solar, which leads to less efficient operation, more fuel consumption and instability in the grid. Baseload can't be eliminated due to the variability of the wind and the sun setting and I refer to the F CAS market, um, that I mentioned earlier. And in the twenty-first century, I can't believe we have an energy crisis of our own making. With ample gold, coal, gas, uranium and wind and solar for remote areas, we should have many options to produce the cheapest power in the world with minimal emissions if intelligently used. Our grandparents who engineered and built a reliable and efficient power system would be appalled at the wasteful and incoherent plans being implemented today. I urge you to diligently consider the engineering reality of electricity production before we accept. before we are set irrevocably on a path to unreliable and expensive power, which we and our children will be paying for lives. This, along with decreased food production and a poisoned industrial landscape, is not a legacy to be proud of. And there's supporting documents with that that have been submitted. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Piper. We'll go to questions from the opposition. Mr. Wes Fang.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Piper, for making yourself available today. Now, I noted in your opening statement, you said that compulsory acquisitions are about to start, that there's the effectively work about to commence on a number of projects. I'm assuming that obviously the EIS has been fully approved and that it's effectively the last resort by Energy Co to do this and that they've done the proper and appropriate consultation over many, many sessions. Would that be a fair assumption?
The EIS isn't approved. The EIS, the public exhibition period had closed a couple of weeks ago. So that is with DPIE, I assume, before it goes to the secretary and then to the minister for approval. So no, the Central West Arana res EIS is not approved. And yeah, the compulsory acquisition process or the negotiation period has been running in parallel. Six month negotiation period finishes this Wednesday and then we'll go into the pan period after that. The consultation, no, well, you would have heard elsewhere and I agree, I don't think the consultation has been appropriate simply because the project isn't approved, it's all jumping the gun. And the breakdown in consultation, I mean, you could go back years to when the electricity infrastructure bill was passed in both houses of your parliament in November 2020 and 17 days. And in November 2020, there was no public consultation worth mentioning about the res or the establishment of the reses. So the consultation breakdown began with an act of parliament that was ran through in November 2020 at the height of the COVID era and it's been similar from then on, really. We're being told, we're not being consulted.
Okay, so in relation to, oh, sorry, in relation to the negotiation and compulsory acquisition process, can you provide some insights as to what steps have been taken in relation to consultation and negotiation by Energy Co in relation to the project? And what, what steps have they taken to negotiating good faith with landholders who are looking to have impacted land either taken or compulsory acquired versus what's been offered by way of compensation or purchase?
Yeah, I'm trying to, sorry, just interpreting your question. The initial contact was made with most landowners via a letter and then public meetings in the local area with staff and maps from Energy Co. A lot of these maps were very yule defined and some of them were just plainly wrong. And so initially the problem was ascertaining exactly where the power lines were going to go. And I think most of that negotiation or that information was, happened directly between landowners. We're all freehold landowners and their Energy Co acquisition managers, which are people employed or contracted to Energy Co to talk directly to landowners. And then they came out and with a mud map and described where it's going to go. We only had one meeting with an acquisition manager because we just said, well, one meeting, we discussed it and we went away and thought about it and we didn't want a part of it and all our correspondence. Since then, we tried to put through a solicitor and in writing and we've seen the acquisition manager at meetings since. And we've agreed to disagree. We also had Chris Swan, Michael Young come out to a couple of meetings and we've discussed directly with them our concerns and were told to basically put up and shut up, I think. It was pretty close to what happened there and we haven't had any further direct communication at that level. There's obviously landowners everywhere along the route that, you know, wonder why it's on their property or why it's on their, a section of the property when there might be a better location not too far away and the route is quite tortuous. The compensation offered is, I guess, per the 1991 Compensation Act and we've all got our evaluations and the Energy Co evaluations. I haven't seen anyone else's clearly. But really, it's hard to negotiate when you've got a gun to your head like compulsory acquisition. I mean, you're not in a strong bargaining position. And I don't think the compensation as Energy Co has done it is adequate, given the diminution or loss in value to the land and not the immediate damage as well, but the future damage because once these power lines are built and these easements are taken, it's just inviting more proponents, more solar, more wind, either on neighbours' property or nearby. So it's only the thin edge of the wedge and this is the problem with looking at this in isolation. You need to say, well, they're projecting our CWO res to expand to 20 gigawatt installed. And so all the projects that land now is just the beginning. We're going to be surrounded by them eventually. I'm not sure if that answered the question, but.
It does. It does impart, Mr. Piper. If there was, and it's the last question I'll ask before I pass to my colleague, the Honourable Susan Carter. If there was an option to have the transmission lines component of the res undergrounded, do you believe that that would make a difference to the approach of the community in relation to the transmission component, not so much the actual energy generation projects, but the actual transmission? Do you believe that people would be more accepting if they were undergrounded?
I do, yeah, obviously. I mean, I think, like I said, it would remove, yeah, it would remove a lot of the, you know, direct routing. You wouldn't have such a tortuous route where it twists and turns through different people's portions of land. So you'd save direction. Visual amenity would obviously be immediately improved. Property devaluation would be immediately removed as a factor, really. The large easement would be immediately reduced. EMF and firefighting concerns would be immediately removed. And most landowners would welcome this change. I mean, that, I mean, high voltage DC was designed to get large loads across large distances. And so if the scheme was redesigned into a more of a hub and spoke arrangement where, you know, distant projects fed into a hub and then a trunk direct DC went to the loads such as the city's oil industry. I think everyone would be, that would make more sense from a technical point of view. It still doesn't remove the environmental cost of manufacturing all this stuff. It doesn't work very well. But as a solution to the immediate problem of getting power lines through land and connecting up, you know, misnamed renewable projects, something like that would make more sense. But it doesn't remove the environmental cost and the emissions produced in producing all this stuff that doesn't work very well.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. I'll pass to my colleague.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Piper.
But I just want to go back actually to a question that my colleague asked and in relation to the effect on agricultural land of the current proposals for the overhead power lines. It seemed to me in your answer that you had a concern that this was a first proposition and that there were plans for further impacts on agricultural land with further reses down the road. Have I understood you and if I have, could you comment on sort of your concerns about future plans?
Yes. Well, the way it started was the Central West Arana res was initially declared at three gigawatt capacity. And then three or four months ago, Energy Co put in a request to have it expanded to 4.5 and then six gigawatt. I'm not sure what status that is, but then in further New South Wales planning documents, it is now written that they want eight gigawatt dispatchable power and 20 gigawatt of installed power. And there's a further 500 kilovolt like trunk line, this major line, extending from Elong Substation to the north west of the res area towards Mendor and Gilgandra. And that area at the moment is relatively undeveloped, as in I'm not aware immediately of what projects are planned for out there, but clearly they intend to saturate that area with projects as well. And then to the east of the res, which is technically outside the res, there's two large solar projects on the Merewarr Plateau that are joining the Golden River National Park. And so they're outside the res, but they're in proximity to the existing power line. So once the power lines are built, it's going to attract the projects because they can connect into the power line. And if we're to expand from three gigawatt to 20 gigawatt, that's a massive expansion. We've already got 47, some, I think, projects pencilled in for the res. So, you know, you're going to have 150 or 200 projects and to get 850 megawatt from a solar farm is about 25 square kilometres. So you can do the math yourself. We're just going to be swamped and covered with this stuff in five or 10 or 15 years. And in the Energy Co EIS, they say themselves, the landscape will change from predominantly rural to industrial in nature. And they boast that we will be part of a modern day power station. Now, I didn't, I haven't built my business and raised a family and built my house and, you know, for the last 30 years here to be in industrial landscape or to be in a power station.
And what impact does that have on agricultural land?
Well, there's the mechanical aspect of moving not so much where it goes over our property but over farming areas, the clearance under the lines, the arcing from the lines, the restrictions within the easement. They affect the big farmers more than us who predominantly graze. There are EMF concerns for, you know, in proximity to magnetic fields or electrical fields for extended periods, whether that be people or animals. The wind turbines themselves, they've got, you know, 2,000 tonne of concrete in the base which stays there forever. They catch fire, they inhibit firefighting, aerial firefighting because they're 850 feet high, the 250 metre turbines. The blades erode and so they shed bischol A, BGA, which is a an endocrine disrupting chemical with limits on, you know, exposure to humans. And so that's going to be blown over the countryside into the waterways. What effect that has on human and animal health and reproduction in the long to medium term. Solar panels, obviously the chemicals in solar panels, in the construction of them, the aluminium and the steel, bleaching into the soils, there's studies about that. And then there's the decommissioning of all this stuff, which has a short lifespan and the maintenance requirements, you know, of leaking oil.
Thank you.
Excuse me, leaking oil and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. We'll go to questions from the crossbench, starting with Mr. Rod Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Thanks for giving your evidence today. Look, in your earlier statement, you said that the EIS is not completed yet and I think we all agree with that. I just wanted to clarify, I think you said bulldozers and constructions are already underway. Is that what you said?
Construction isn't underway, but I got a call from a neighbour and he said that Energy Co is really twisting his arm to give access to a drilling rig, to start mechanical work on his property. And he hasn't yet signed an agreement, as in they haven't acquired the easement, but they want to get access.
Sure.
So machinery is starting to move.
Sure. What does that say to you and fellow landholders out there in your area?
Well, there's the desperation or, you know, they're on a timeline and they seem like they want to force it through before, you know, proper review and the proper process is even complete.
Sure. Can I, can I put this proposition to you? I mean, I have anecdotal evidence myself, but I'm not giving the evidence, so let's ask you this. You want to increase the capacity of a farm, so you want to buy additional land. So you come to me as a local real estate agent and I show you two different blocks of land, both very similar in topography and soil content, both for exactly the same dollar per acre asking price, but one of them has a high voltage overhead line running through them and the other one doesn't. Which one would you choose?
Well, I'd choose the one without a power line and the evidence of the market shows that.
Certainly. And can I then ask you this? What's the particular impact on your farm and/or surrounding farms from the construction of overhead high voltage lines? For example, what's your loss of production? Can you spray crops using a crop duster in that area? Can you get headers and other high machinery in under them, bearing in mind the easement? What's it do to the value of properties? What's it do to the amenity of your life? Can you, can you talk to us about, a little bit about that, please?
Yeah, all right. I'm not, I'm not a big farmer, as in I'm not a broad acre farmer and the property that's affected is predominantly a grazing property. So it's mainly the livestock activities that will be affected. Through the west and around me are people that farm and getting machinery under the power lines has been documented before. I think there's a 4.3 metre limitation and many spray rigs and harvesters are already above that. The power line is on our, in our case, is a 3.30 kilovolt dual circuit line that cuts across the back corner of one property, so it only affects, you know, less than four or five hectares directly. And so we're relatively minor in the scheme of things, but the neighbours have seven or eight kilometres of power line on their property and others are in the same situation where the power lines cross prime, you know, river farming country that they have to traverse, you know, repeatedly with machinery all the time. So for us, it's a relatively minor impact. I admit that.
But just surrounding bigger broad acre landholders would have a more significant impact on them and their production capacity though, wouldn't it?
It will, yeah, it will affect them and then the disruption during construction as well because they don't, they want you to remove livestock. They don't want to open shut gates, so they're going, and they want to cut the fences and they want to use the power line roots as, as an internal road system to run workers and machinery. So wherever they traverse your property, you're going to have to exclude those areas with fencing or some other way. So as not to have stock escape or, and you won't be able to work that land even, you know, for the three and a half, four years of construction. And so for those people affected like that, I think they may do some calculation in the compensation for that loss of productivity. But for many things where people have them going near the house or their silos or their yards and in one case, you know, over his water tank for his house, there's no compensation for having to move or being unable to use their own infrastructure on their property while construction is going ahead.
Thank you, Chair. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you. I've just got a couple of questions, Mr. Piper. So firstly, just wanting to be clear around what particular options were provided in relation to putting some of the transmission, infrastructure transmission lines underground. Firstly.
Options to us, that option was never put to us or any other landowner, as I understand it, in this res.
Okay, so first up, you've got basically overhead transmission lines, that's it, no other options. So just to be, be clear.
Yes, no, the undergrounding has never been mentioned. We wrote to Energy Co when the first undergrounding inquiry was stood up and requested an extension to the period until that inquiry reported. They said that it would not affect their operations and if, depending on the report from that inquiry, well, then they would adjust if they needed to.
I just wanted to also just get your view or the community's views. It does sound like the frustration is with the renewable energy zone that reses kind of more broadly, obviously, with your evidence here today. So how much of a difference would it make if part, part of the infrastructure, part of the transmission lines were put underground or all of them? Would it make any, a difference to those members of the community who are in opposition to the res?
The percentage of the community that are in opposition, that are affected by power lines and that's if they see that as their main and only problem, I think it would, it would probably. it would, would probably, they would try, you know, they would accept probably undergrounding before they accept the, the standard overhead lines and it may get them over the line. For the broader community who have, you know, projected into be looking out their front window at solar, you know, a solar plantation or, you know, you're, you're three or four kilometres or less from wind turbines, I don't think it's going to change their view of the Res or the whole scheme, no. I mean, that, and that's where I'm at too. I mean, I, it's a bigger problem. We shouldn't, we shouldn't just be looking at, in silos, as they say, about, oh, let's talk about undergrounding or overgrounding. You've got a, I mean, the due diligence is doing the whole thing, has to be examined technically. And, and that's what I wish would happen, that a proper technical look at it would, would happen. And we come up with a proper engineering solution rather than something that's so terribly inefficient to carry out.
Can I also, thank you, sorry, I think we've got a delay here. Um, can I also just, just check then, um, the, what work has been done with the renewable energy kind of proponents as part of this, this Res to work with the community to ensure that there are community benefits, if you like. I know that's a big, this is a big area of work that renewable energy companies, uh, and the government to some extent is undertaking to try and build support with, uh, within regional communities. From your perspective, what's happened or hasn't happened in that regard?
All right, I'm not, uh, what I know, uh, the council, I believe, has negotiated or agreed a one point five percent of capital, um, payment to them from the proponents, so from the TILTS and the ACENs, not, not Energy Co. Uh, those, I'm just talking immediately around the Cooler, which are the two wind projects around here. That's what I know. And those companies have also made community donations to the Lions Club and to the Men's Shed, um, to the craft shop. But we're talking, you know, two, three, I don't know, thousand dollars maybe. So all of that stuff is, is small in the grand scheme of things. And, um, I believe the access charge that Energy Co is planning to charge the, the generators to access the grid, um, also goes back into, is meant to pay for the construction of the line and also the community payments. Um, I can't remember the details, the numbers on that, but by the time you take out a lot of the expenses they put into the community payments, there, there isn't a real lot that's left for the community. And then I don't think it's the place of private generators or private companies to be picking up the tab for um, infrastructure or services that really are in the government's domain and should remain in the government's domain. I don't think they should be taken over or paid for by private companies.
Yes, thank you, Mr Piper. We can probably agree on that point. Um, can I, uh, check, I just wanted to get those two companies, you, you named two companies then. Could you, um, just say their names again and also the council that you were referring to?
Uh, I'm in the Warhambunkelshire Council. And the wind farm, they call it the Liverpool Range Wind Farm, is, um, owned at the moment by Tilt. It's had two, two owners since it was commenced already. And the one to the west and, or south of Cooler is, uh, the Valley of the Winds, which is owned by ACEN, A C E N, which is a Filipino owned company.
Okay, that's very useful. Thank you very much. We'll go to questions now from government members.
I think there's no questions from the government.
Okay, right. Do there any other, uh, questions from, uh, the opposition?
No.
Great. All right, that's, that's, okay, we are, um, uh, out of questions for you, Mr Piper. Thank you so much for appearing today. Uh, your evidence was, uh, very valuable, um, and, uh, the committee will now break for lunch. Thank you very much. I don't think you.
Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you so much. And we will be back at one thirty.
So just checking who, okay, now Simon, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
And Amy, can you hear me?
I can indeed.
Okay, excellent. All right, well, let's get you both sworn in. If you could both please state your name and position, title, and swear either an oath or an affirmation. I understand you have been sent those words. We'll start with you, Mr. Corbell.
Thank you. My name is Simon Corbell. I'm the CEO of Clean Energy Investor Group. And I solemnly, sincerely, and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Kane?
Thank you, Ms. Kane. I am Amy Kane. I'm a Director of Stride Renewables. And I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that giving evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. And I assume you both have a short opening statements to make, starting with you, Mr. Corbell.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Select Committee for the opportunity to give evidence before you today. So I am the CEO of Clean Energy Investor Group. Clean Energy Investor Group is an industry association that represents investors in the clean energy sector in Australia. Collectively, our members hold about fifty percent of all operational clean energy assets in the national electricity market currently. We're very pleased to provide the submission that members have obviously received in relation to this select committee inquiry. There are just a couple of points I wish to highlight. The first is that the speed and urgency of the energy transition is critical. Right now, there is a shortage in the total volume of new committed projects required to meet the operational demand of the New South Wales region of the national electricity market, particularly as we anticipate the closure of thermal generation plant over the next decade. Therefore, we need to get as much new clean energy generation operational in the NAM as quickly as possible. And that's only feasible if there is equally a timely delivery of transmission, new transmission infrastructure. The quickest way and the most effective way to deliver new transmission infrastructure is through overhead transmission cabling. It's cheaper, it's more cost effective, and that means consumers pay less when it comes to their electricity bills. We would highlight that undergrounding of high voltage transmission infrastructure is more expensive. Recent estimates from the Australian Energy Market Operator, in consideration of similar transmission projects in Victoria, indicate that the cost of undergrounding high voltage transmission lines is up to double the cost associated with overhead transmission infrastructure. Therefore, we would say to the committee that it's critical that proper consideration be given to the cost, not just to governments, but also to energy consumers who will be asked to recover the costs of those transmission infrastructure investments. Finally, I wanted to highlight the importance of ensuring and building social licence in host communities. It is recognised that the establishment of any new infrastructure can raise significant concerns in communities where that infrastructure is being proposed, and transmission infrastructure is no different. Therefore, it's absolutely critically important that transmission companies and governments focus very strongly on ensuring that strong social licence is built and maintained. And that is particularly the case in the context of benefit sharing outcomes for regional communities that are enduring and long lasting, and recognise the significant role that those communities play in hosting transmission infrastructure for the long term. We believe there's more work that needs to be done by governments in this regard and by the transmission sector more broadly. And we continue to advocate to governments the steps needed to ensure that that social licence is built and maintained. Madam Chair, I'll conclude my comments there, and thank you for the opportunity to make the opening statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corbell. Ms. Kane, do you have an opening statement as well?
I do. Thank you, Chair. I echo many of Simon's comments and very much believe that transmission is the biggest constraint to meeting New South Wales net zero targets. We have plenty of market interest in renewables. Our calculations is we currently have more than thirty gigawatts of renewable projects in the New South Wales planning system. We need about four point six, according to AEMO, so lack of market interest is not the problem. It's curtailment by the network that is stopping these projects being built and slowing down the energy transition, as well as putting challenges on our net zero targets. The transmission projects that are essential to unlock this clean energy is being subject to lengthy delays and cost increases, which is then creating uncertainty to invest in this generation. I do believe we need to think very carefully about the impacts of transmission lines on communities and consider how we can share the benefits in a more fair and equitable manner. We also need to think about the impact of transmission on the neighbours, not just the landowners, and the fact that regional communities are disproportionately impacted. So I think we need to really consider innovative ideas to build out Australia's transmission lines, and obviously in New South Wales, and gain social licence to do that. So one particular area that has been done overseas is the use of mono poles. So that's using and changing the design structure for transmission lines that are less visually impactful, moving away from traditional lattice designs that have much more impact on the vegetation and surrounding environment. And you can effectively see straight through them compared to the current structures. I also think that often the concern, which I assume is leading to your inquiry about going underground, is often associated with the wider infrastructure, energy infrastructure, and not just the transmission. So we need to consider how it can be bundled together and how we can do the benefit sharing with the communities so that they can then reap the rewards. And there's a whole lot of things that can be done to do that. So we do need a lot of transmission. We need it quickly. Time is absolutely of the essence. And postponing it and creating more uncertainty about more options that are potentially costly without a pathway to fund them is actually causing more stress for communities. So we need to crack on with the job. We need to gain social licence through meaningful community engagement and also bespoke benefit sharing schemes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We'll now move to questions from the opposition. Mr. Wisfan.
Thank you very much for appearing today. And I want to direct my first set of questions to Mr., sorry, I'm just pulling it up, Mr. Corbell. Mr. Corbell, could I just ask initially, are you based in Melbourne? Is that correct? I think you were referencing Victoria studies in your opening statement. Is that correct?
No, that's only partially correct. Clean Energy Investor Group is a national industry body. We represent businesses across the national electricity market, so in all jurisdictions except Western Australia and the Northern Territory. Personally, I'm based in Canberra, but our organisation has personnel in Melbourne, in Brisbane, as well as in Canberra.
Okay, but you're personally based in Canberra, right?
That's right.
So have you had the opportunity to head out to, I would say, you know, around the Tumit Snowy Valleys area where a lot of the impacted Humlink communities are? Have you had the opportunity to go out there and sit down and meet with people that are impacted by the transmission lines as they're proposed?
I'm familiar with that area. I haven't visited it recently. But I have had in the past extensive experience in engaging with regional communities around transmission infrastructure development. In a previous role, I worked for the Victorian Government. And as part of that, I had responsibility for talking with and meeting with regional communities about transmission and distribution infrastructure development, associatively clean energy projects. So I'm familiar with the types of issues that are raised by regional communities in that context.
Understood. So then you'd be aware that almost universally, every single stakeholder that we've had present to us, either in this committee as it's formed at the moment, or the previous committee that was under state development, have been universally opposed to the Humlink project overhead transmission lines or, I guess, the overheading of additional transmission lines in general. You'd be aware of that sort of feedback, right?
I am aware of that, yes.
Okay. And I note, obviously, the comments in your submission that talk about the need for these projects to to be constructed so that we can build on our clean energy future, et cetera. Do you have a view as to what is the more important? Whether delivery of clean energies is a more important goal than something like sustainable agriculture and the ability to feed and clothe themselves?
Yes, thank you. Well, our view would be that both compatible exercises. Overhead transmission infrastructure allows for land to continue to be utilised for a broad range of uses and results in overall less alienation of land use capability than undergrounding does. As we highlighted in our submission to the committee, undergrounding of high voltage transmission in particular results in a very high level of alienation of that land. It is difficult to use that land for any other productive purpose, cropping, anything that involves land disturbance is effectively not possible with high voltage undergrounded transmission infrastructure. So we would say that, that is, those are the sorts of issues that we would encourage the committee to take into account.
Mr. Corbell, whilst I accept that that's your view, I would say that the evidence that this committee has heard both today and previously under the former guise under state development, that you've completely ignored a number of the issues that stakeholders have provided in us, by, like, in evidence to us around the land use and the impact of overhead transmission lines. And I guess I'm seeking to understand how your organisation, and you in particular, are able to make those statements, under what basis, under what evidentiary basis that it's based on?
Yes, so this is, these factors are well understood from the experience of undergrounding of high voltage transmission lines globally.
Can I ask just a question of clarification here? When you're talking high voltage underground line, are you referring to AC or DC?
It can be either. It depends on the total carrying capacity of the line. But what I would, what I would highlight is that the experience globally and in Australia of undergrounding, and I have to say the experience in Australia is very limited. But more broadly globally, the undergrounding of high voltage transmission lines does result in a much higher level of alienation of land than overhead lines. Overhead lines, well, if I can answer your question.
Yes.
In terms of the evidentiary base for that, our submission highlights with references a range of examples of where that infrastructure has been built and the relatively limited application of it overseas because of cost and other, other challenges, including the alienation of land. So we would highlight to you that these assertions are not made in a vacuum. They are referenced carefully in our submission to you. And it's an important consideration when you think about cost and when you think about impacts on land use when it comes to the development of this very large and very expensive type of infrastructure.
So just to that issue, and you've actually segued very nicely into where I was hoping to take this, Mr. Corbell. For example, part of the evidence that you've referenced is the transgrid submission to the underground of Humlink. And you've referenced Standing Committee on State Development, which is actually the committee that we were on previously that looked at this issue. A lot of the evidence that you've cited here is at best disputed, or I would guess doesn't actually reference the, the evidence that we've heard elsewhere. So for example, in numerical number five, you've referenced, "In contrast, underground lines come with significant land disturbance issues during initial trenching works and maintenance access is more invasive, requiring, often requiring digging up soils and crops to address faults." Now, that's come out of the Transgrid Report, September 2022, "Undergrounding Humlink will triple costs." Now, Mr. Corbell, I would say that you've, while you've referenced evidence, that evidence is disputed. And certainly the reason that we are holding these inquiries is because the evidence was questionable when we looked at it last time. I'll ask again, what evidence, what basis are you making these claims that, that undergrounding is more disturbing, more more impacting on local communities than, than, than what overhead lines would be? And aren't you simply just a, a front for, for energy investors that are wanting to get these energy projects connected quicker, which is why they're advocating for overhead?
Well, I think it's in all of our interests to get clean energy generation connected more quickly. It's in our interests from a climate perspective. It's in our interests from an economic perspective. It's in our interests from an energy stability, energy system stability perspective. So I don't think there's any difficulty with asserting that these projects need to be connected more quickly.
But, Mr. Corbell, you haven't met with these, you haven't met with these communities?
If I could, if I could answer the question.
Just thought a point of order's been taken, which I know will be to allow the witness to finish and just treat witnesses with respect as well. If the, Mr. Corbell, if you could continue with your response?
Thank you, Chair. In terms of the evidence, as the member has quite rightly identified, we've drawn on the evidence of an experienced transmission development business that with all the cost estimation and technical assessment capabilities that a business such as that would have. I haven't seen any evidence to suggest that the assertions made by that that business, which is an expert business in the delivery of transmission infrastructure, are incorrect. So I'm not familiar with any claim to the contrary. But what I would say is that when you look at life expectancy of overhead transmission versus underground transmission, the order of magnitude is about, it's about a hundred percent higher. Between eighty and a hundred years, life expectancy for overhead transmission, approximately forty years for underground transmission. The cost, based on the Humlink proposal, overhead was four point eight nine billion. Underground was somewhere between eleven point five billion for HVDC or seventeen point one billion for HVAC. Repair time is much higher. Overhead transmission, generally between one to two days. Underground transmission, between three to six months.
Mr. Corbell, I do appreciate, I do appreciate the evidence. I'm well aware of the evidence. What I'm trying to drill down on is how you've actually, it would appear to me that you've effectively recycled a number of the submissions that were made to the previous inquiry and trying to re-prosecute a lot of those arguments, a lot of the arguments that we discounted or have questions around. Now, could I drill down?
No, no, don't waste my time. There is, there is a point of order that's been taken.
It's been suggested that we have discounted those arguments. I think that's quite a misleading thing to suggest to the witness because the majority report was quite to the contrary. And the witness shouldn't be misled.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. It's not a point of order. Continue, Wisfan.
Could I drill down onto how your organisation is formed? Who are the stakeholders that form it? How is members? How is membership determined? Is there a membership fee? Who, in effect, how, how is your energy group formed?
We're formed like any other industry association. Companies join the association as members. They pay a membership fee. And collectively, our organisation determines our positions on policy and regulatory matters based on the consensus view.
How many members do you have, Mr. Corbell?
Across the membership.
How many members do you have?
It's outlined in our submission, we have approximately 20, 20 companies as members.
Okay. Do you have any members that are in favour of undergrounding?
No.
No. Have you taken into account any views that are different? I.e. the community groups, the, the impacted communities, the landholders, the stakeholders that have all made submissions around the impacts that overhead power lines will have on their lives, their livelihoods and their farming practices?
Yes, we do seek to take account of broader community views when it comes to determining our position on, on policy and regulatory matters. This issue is no different.
Because I don't see within your, I don't see within your submission any, any position that, that supports or takes into account those views?
I'm very happy to answer the member's question if he gives me an opportunity.
It's been treated with extreme discourtesy, Chair, and it suggests, it started with.
Well, I'd say that this submission is.
Order, 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 yes.
Not that difficult for Mr. Fang to control himself, I would suggest.
Yes.
And the progress of this hearing will benefit.
Yeah, that's the end of that time, which, yes, Mr. Fang is done. We now go to crossbench members. I'll kick off with a few questions to begin with. I might go to you first, Ms. Keane. I just wanted to, I'm as supportive as you both are and many people are in ensuring that renewable energy projects are fast-tracked as, as quickly as possible and that we get things moving as quickly as possible. However, one of the, the issues that I'm struggling with is that the, firstly, there does seem to be almost an ideological opposition to undergrounding, if you like, as though undergrounding can't even be considered at all ever. Wanted to just, I'm aware that part of it is due to the regulatory environment in which consumers, which the transmission network, you know, has to be built to the lowest cost to consumer and that, that costs have been a part of that for some time. Costs we're hearing are reducing and reducing. Is that the core, is that the key reason why a group like Stride Renewables is against undergrounding transmission? Is it because of the cost factor first and foremost?
And look, to be perfectly clear, we didn't say we're opposed to it. I think if it is cost effective and can be done in a timely manner, that's great. I'm not an expert on undergrounding, nor have I professed to be. But I think cost is always an issue for any infrastructure. And of course, it's the physical nature of it as well.
Thank you, Mr. Corbell.
There's no philosophical opposition to it.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Corbell, can I, can I ask you, you were asked before by Mr. Wes Fang about whether any of your members supported or were in favour of underground transmission and you very quickly said no. That again is, is one of the things that I've been grappling with as a Greens member on these committees who strongly supports renewable energy and fast-tracking renewable energy is what appears to be by the regulators, by some of the companies, almost an ideological opposition to undergrounding. I absolutely take and understand that we can't have every single transmit, new transmission line in New South Wales undergrounded. But surely it's not so black and white, is it? That you could just come out then very quickly and say all 20 of your companies don't support undergrounding of transmission lines?
Chair, for exactly some reasons that Ms. Keane has just outlined, we don't support it at this point in time because it can't be delivered in a cost-effective way that minimizes price impacts on consumers or avoids what would be a lengthy delay in the build-out of transmission infrastructure. The, the climate crisis requires a rapid response to the challenges associated with greenhouse gas emissions and building infrastructure that will take longer to deliver, that will be less long-lived and will be more expensive. Just doesn't make sense in the context of the situation we're facing in terms of the energy transition and the broader climate crisis. Just to be clear, our submission made, did state very clearly that future considerations should be given to undergrounding transmission lines. But we do not consider it currently a feasible option for the reasons that I have just outlined and which Ms. Keane also outlined before me.
Thank you. Can I, in relation to, you said that the underground option won't last as long. I think your language was, and it was in here as well, in terms of the duration. You've got life expectancy here of underground transmission, approximately 40 years. Life expectancy overhead 80 to 100, as well as the costs, estimated completion date, repair time. Where of those, where have you got all of those statistics from?
So if you're referring to table two in our submission, that draws largely on the evidence provided to AEMO in relation to the Hume Link project.
So the evidence was provided, I can see there's a number of the, that evidence is actually, most of it is evidence that was presented to this, to this inquiry earlier, to the State Development Committee inquiry. So can I?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, okay, thank you. What, can I, the recommendations around the regulatory process then in terms of improvements? Do either of you have any concerns about, for example, the fact that the, the RIT-T does not take into account social and environmental impacts? Is that of concern to you, Ms. Keane? And should that change? Should the committee be trying to recommend things like this? For example, like it's like people, you, it's an, there is an existing regulatory framework that in some ways is creating this issue of having to build transmission infrastructure at least cost to consumers. So if there's any recommendations for the inquiry to make things a bit better going forward, we would love to hear them from you, Ms. Keane.
And look, I think the RIT-T process has some fundamental challenges associated with it. It is very much focused on the lease costs, which you raised before, and doesn't consider the environmental or social impact. So yes, I think there should be consideration to how that can be more fit for purpose. And I understand that the AER is doing a review of that at the moment. But obviously in New South Wales, with a lot of the transmission lines that are being proposed, they are not under that framework. That is why the renewable energy zones don't consider the importance of social licence. And I commend the policy to have benefit sharing programmes as part of that. But yes, there's absolutely room for reform of the current RIT-T process.
And if I may add, Chair.
Thank you.
We also support changes to the RIT-T process to have stronger regard to community impacts and broader non-economic considerations when it comes to that regulatory investment test framework. As Ms. Keane's outlined, the Australian Energy Regulator is currently considering such changes. And as an industry organisation, we have made submission to the AER supporting the inclusion of those types of criteria. So it is quite wrong to suggest that as an investor body, we don't have regard to those matters. We do. And we support the development of stronger social licence and benefit sharing frameworks to inform investment in the energy sector overall, including in relation to transmission. Because at the end of the day, this infrastructure has to be delivered in a way that builds, maintains and delivers benefits to communities, including those communities that host that transmission infrastructure. But we must also balance that against the fact that the energy transition is expensive. And in the Australian regulatory environment, those costs are largely passed through to consumers, particularly when it comes to infrastructure such as transmission. And therefore, the broader costs borne by consumers, big and small, households and businesses, must be properly taken into account.
Thank you. I'll pass now to Mr. Rod Roberts for questions.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to both of you for appearing today. Mr. Corbell, we've already determined that you don't live in a rural community. Do you own any rural land that's likely to be impacted by overhead high voltage lines at all?
No, I do not.
Okay. Do you have an engineering, electrical engineering background or civil construction background at all?
I do not personally, but many of our members, of course, are experts in energy infrastructure, in particular electricity generation infrastructure. And they have many people who are qualified either as electrical engineers or a range of other trades and professions.
Sure. Would it be a fair statement to say that your membership base and, and investors will only realise a profit once connected to the grid? So speed and timeliness is paramount from your client base perspective?
Of course. You can't, you can't get a return on your investment unless you can get your product to market. And it's the same with electricity and electricity infrastructure.
Ms. Keane, to you, is it fair statement to say that Stride is a lobbyist and advocate group on behalf of your clients in the renewable energy sector?
No, that's not fair. We are not lobbyists, we're technical experts. I know the industry very well. I'm a policy, have a policy background, worked in the sector for 20 years and provide modelling and other technical services.
Okay. Well then, take that further. Do you have a fiduciary and moral obligation to your clients?
Of course.
So then it would, I'm assuming, be highly improper for you to advance a proposition that's not favourable to your clients at all?
I have a wide, wide diversity of clients, have different interests. So I don't have a single position that represents all my interests.
Well, in relation to this, you're giving evidence.
I'm representing this as an individual of interest in the market. I wrote this as myself, who has an interest in accelerating the energy transition to ensure we reduce our carbon emissions. And the best way to do that is to address the network constraints that currently are in the energy market and that are preventing clean energy being provided to homes and consumers in New South Wales.
Well, I've just got one question that begs to be asked, and that'll be my final question. Are you related to Matt Keane at all, who developed the New South Wales Renewable Energy Roadmap?
That's not relevant to this conversation today. That was not part of my conversation.
Well, it's a question that I've asked, Chair, and you're here, you've taken the oath, I understand, or affirmation it was, to tell the truth here.
I am a, I am a non-immediate relative.
Cousin, is that right?
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I have, Chair. Thanks.
Thank you. On that pass to the government members.
Thanks, Chair. And I'll start for the government with some questions of Mr. Corbell. Mr. Corbell, as you will be aware, our terms of reference are pretty broad in relation to transmission infrastructure. But the inquiry in this iteration and the previous one has had a particular focus on Hume Link. So I wanted to ask you some questions firstly about Hume Link. There's been evidence on both sides of the debate, if I can put it that way, that an undergrounding option for Hume Link would not have been approved by the regulator, the AER. Just if I could start firstly, do you agree with that? That the AER would not have approved an undergrounding option for Hume Link if it had been put to them?
Thank you, Ms. Lawrence. I'm not privy to how the AER would have considered that if it had been put to them. But I can make the general observation that the AER is obliged to consider the most cost-effective solution, the least cost impact on consumers when it decides whether or not to approve the development of a piece of infrastructure which is regulated under the national electricity law.
Yeah. I was wondering if you could explain for the committee members some details about the regulatory test and particularly how it is that it has its focus on the impact on consumer price?
Yes, so in general, the, the way that this, this regulatory environment operates is that first of all, it's a recognition that transmission is a natural monopoly. And therefore, the owner of those assets is able to seek costs for the development of that infrastructure from all of the consumers who benefit from it. So as a result, the Australian Energy Regulator has to have regard to minimising cost impacts for consumers because this is a monopoly asset with a regulated asset base. And that transmission owner, the monopoly operator, can only seek to recover its costs from consumers where it is the most cost-efficient piece of infrastructure to recover costs from. So basically, transmission infrastructure operators are not allowed to build expensive pieces of kit that are not the cheapest, most suitable solution. And then ask consumers to pay for it through their electricity bills. So that's why it's a very important parameter in protecting the interests of consumers, big and small, and allows for the efficient operation of the economy more broadly.
So one thing I'm struggling with in the context of terms of reference that I think require us to look at the different options for a project like Hume Link is how it is as a committee of a state parliament that we could, for example, hypothetically recommend an undergrounding option for something like Hume Link if the shared evidence on both sides, if I can put it that way, is that it wouldn't be approved by the regulator. In that context, I was wondering, could you tell us how it is that the national electricity law and the regulatory framework that sits as part of it actually can be amended? Like, what's the governmental process there?
I'll hear the point of order.
The point of order is that the honourable member seems to be questioning the basic fundamental terms on which the inquiry is conducted. And if, and asking a witness to comment in relation to whether or not there are valid terms to reference to this inquiry.
To the point of order, I'm certainly not doing that. I'm asking how it is that the national electricity law can be amended, which I think is a very important matter when the terms of reference have us looking at the options.
To the point of order, that question is predicated on an assumption that the regulator would not allow the undergrounding. And if the regulator, if that presumption goes to the fundamental terms of reference of this committee and suggesting it's an inappropriate matter for the state parliament to inquire into.
I think my friend might have the disadvantage of not having been on the previous inquiry where that was indeed the evidence that it wouldn't be approved. And it might well be relevant, for example, that we make a recommendation for the amendment of the national electricity law. So it would be strange if we couldn't ask questions relevant to it.
I'm prepared to allow the, the question to be put. I would remind the member, though, that the, the committee is the will of the House as a select committee. And therefore, questioning the terms of reference in relation to the, sorry, questioning the terms of reference as elected by the House is perhaps not appropriate at this time, but I'll allow you to continue to put questions.
Thanks, Chair. I'll assure the committee, I wasn't challenging the terms of reference. I'm asking questions relevant to it. I'm wondering, Mr. Corbell, can you enlighten the committee members on how it is from a governmental point of view that the national electricity law can be amended?
Yes, certainly. So the national electricity law is a, it's a cross-government agreement across all jurisdictions at a state level, territory level and the Commonwealth. And it provides for a common uniform law which is enacted in all jurisdictions with the agreement of all ministers. And any change to that law has to also be agreed by all relevant jurisdictions through the relevant ministerial council. I should highlight it is possible for jurisdictions to. I should highlight, it is possible for jurisdictions to derogate from the national electricity law and to create their own state-specific regulatory environments. And that's certainly been the case in relation to a number of jurisdictions recently. Indeed, the infrastructure roadmap, the electricity infrastructure roadmap itself in New South Wales does allow for, does rely on some level of derogation already. And we've seen derogation also in other jurisdictions, particularly in Victoria. But those are the exception rather than the norm. And they do require, in those instances, specific decisions of the relevant state parliament for derogation to occur.
Thanks, Mr. Corbell. We heard some evidence this morning about there being a delay or that there would be a delay if a project like Hume Link was now approached on the basis of undergrounding, when the preparatory processes have been focused on above grounding. And I was wondering if you could give us your analysis of the risks to the provision of electricity, if there were substantial delays to implementation of the transmission infrastructure?
Yes, thank you. So I think the key risk is the more delay you see in terms of delivery of transmission infrastructure, the more delay you see in the development, construction and operation of new electricity generation infrastructure. New electricity generation infrastructure is heavily reliant on new transmission infrastructure being built. And we're already seeing in New South Wales a situation where, because of a shortfall in new electricity generation being built in a timely way, questions arising about whether or not existing increasingly unreliable electricity generation infrastructure, such as a RAR power station, need to be kept open for longer. So in that situation, of an ongoing reliance on a piece of aging, increasingly unreliable electricity generation, that presents real risks to security of supply. And it's clearly an issue that is of significant concern to the New South Wales Government at the moment. And the key factors that drive that are essentially access to grid for new wind and solar generation. So for that reason, we think it's critically important that you cannot disentangle issues of visual impact, broader social licence in communities, and reliability and security of supply, as well as affordability of supply. All of these factors intersect. They all must be taken into account. And they need to be balanced in terms of achieving the optimal pathway that allows more low-cost wind and solar to be built as quickly as possible to meet the needs of an energy system that is increasingly relying on aging and increasingly unreliable pieces of generation infrastructure.
So there's been evidence, obviously, in respect of Hume Link, that it's been started on the basis of above grounding and that there would be delay if there was a change of course in that respect. But are you able to give some evidence on the question of putting aside changes halfway through a process? But is it generally the case that above grounding is quicker than undergrounding as a mode of installing this type of infrastructure?
Yes. It is generally the case that the construction of above-ground transmission is quicker than underground. I have to caveat that by saying that these are relative assessments. Building any large piece of infrastructure takes time, and above-ground transmission in and of itself takes time to build and operate. But our submission highlights that the timeframes associated with undergrounding are longer. The complexities, particularly of tunneling or boring, are higher, and therefore, the risks are higher. And we've seen that, obviously, in relation to attempts to underground other pieces of infrastructure in the energy market lately. So it's quite clear that the complexities with trying to go underground brings a whole new level of risk in terms of infrastructure delivery. And those are risks that ultimately are and of themselves borne by taxpayers if the cost is higher than anticipated. So I think whilst we talk about the relative cost of overhead versus underground, we also have to remember that if the risks are higher in terms of delivery, the risks of an increased cost burden on consumers are also higher. And that is a factor that the committee should take into account in considering the relative benefits of types of infrastructure.
So if above grounding is quicker and cheaper generally, in what circumstances would one utilise undergrounding for transmission infrastructure? In your opinion?
Generally speaking, the experience internationally has been that undergrounding has been utilised where there is no above-ground easement available for that piece of infrastructure. So in the Australian context, undergrounding has been utilised in relation to heavily built-up urban areas where there is no above-ground corridor available. And in those circumstances, it's been for relatively short lengths. So lengths of maybe several kilometres at a maximum. But we're certainly not in the order of hundreds and hundreds of kilometres or even tens of kilometres. And that's because of cost. So the absence of an above-ground corridor would generally be the reason why undergrounding would have to be considered as the only viable option available.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corbell, Ms. Keane. That is the end of this session. Thank you for appearing. And we will now call out next witnesses. Thank you both for attending and for your evidence today.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Corbell, Ms. Keane. Session, thank you for appearing. And we... To the people who are the witnesses who have just tuned in, if you've also got anything on your screens in terms of watching the webcast, if you could make sure that that is off, or you have shut that window, because I think that's what just happened earlier. Okay, welcome to our next witnesses. We'll begin by swearing you in. I'll start with the list of the names I have in front of me. So I'll start with Ms. Heidi Mackelney. What we'll do is, each of you to state your name and position title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation, which I understand the secretariat would have provided you. So Ms. Mackelney, is it? Can you hear me? That's not promising. Mr. Bray, are you on...? Can you hear me? Let's go with you, because I'm, let's go with you to begin with.
Sure. So my name's Andrew Bray. I'm the National Director of Realignment.
It's all each of you to state your name and position title, and then swear either an oath or affirmation, which I understand the secretariat would have provided you. So Ms. Mackelney, is it?
Yeah. Hi, Mackelney. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? That's not promising. Mr. Bray, are you on...?
I know, I'm aware. Where's...?
Can you hear me?
Somebody calling her?
All right. We'll just move to our next witness. So Dr. Gerard, if we, I'll start with you. Thanks.
Thank you. Just correction, Ms. Gerard.
Uh-huh.
Thank you.
Can you just check if you can hear me?
We can hear you now.
Okay, great.
I'm the affirmation?
Yes.
I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. Mr. Heaney?
Lee Heaney, Manager of Government Relations at the Smart Energy Council. And my affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Mr. Wolf?
Connor Wolf, Policy Advisor, Smart Energy Council. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. We'll try you again, Ms. Mackelney. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. If you could state your name and position title and oath or affirmation, please.
I'm Heidi Mackelney, Engagement Coordinator from Community Power Agency. And also the affirmation, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you all so much. We're starting with the Community Power Agency in terms of short opening statements. Do one of you have a short opening statement to make? Okay, Ms. Gerard.
Thank you. I'm a Community Engagement Coordinator at Community Power Agency. And we collaborate with and build capacity in communities with government and industry to create a renewable energy policies and projects that result in a fairer and faster energy transition. One aspect of our work is working on the ground in renewable energy zones. For the past year, I've been working alongside community stakeholders in Gippsland. And my colleague Heidi, joining here today, works in the New England. We wrote a submission to this original inquiry because we are dedicated to making sure that energy infrastructure is developed in ways that engage and deliver meaningful benefits to host communities. Communities need to experience procedural and distributional justice in this process. Our position is that the shift to renewables should be done in ways that have minimal impact to biodiversity and nature, allow us to achieve Australia's renewable energy targets within timeframes to meet Paris Agreement goals, and to create lasting benefits for host regions. Our research finds that global experience with underground transmission can be a useful solution where lines pass close to densely populated areas, or in some sections of a project where visual amenity or ecological or other factors are considered. However, it is worth noting that underground cabling does not necessarily provide fewer ecological impacts. Furthermore, decisions around above or below-ground cabling should incorporate a range of considerations, such as First Nations self-determination, fair pay for landowners, and holding infrastructure, shared community benefits, and improved community engagement practices. Transmission should be delivered in ways that keep costs down for energy consumers. And while there are many factors to consider in rolling out above or below-ground transmission, I'd like to bring the panel's attention to a few ways in which transmission is being delivered in innovative ways in other regions. In the north-west of Tasmania, TAS Networks ran an extensive community engagement process and co-designed a community benefit sharing programme, which I think is quite emergent in transmission. A key part of this was a youth panel made up of 18 to 25-year-olds from across north-west Tasmania. Given young people would have to live with the infrastructure the longest, the community supported them to have a lead role in this. And the benefit scheme will provide $10 million for initiatives providing benefits to communities in six local government areas affected by the project. In Canada, First Nations co-own several large transmission line projects facilitating ongoing economic development for the First Nations communities across the country. Transmission infrastructure is the linchpin to, in a renewable energy system that delivers on Australia's net-zero emission targets. It can also be reimagined as a pathway for greater community agency and regional economic development, and this is what we would like to see.
Thank you very much for that. We'll go to Mr. Andrew Bray now from Realignment. I assume you have a short opening statement?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I didn't do the swearing in before because...
Oh, because of the, I'm sorry about that. We'd better do that then. Okay, let's fire away. Name, position, title, and oath or affirmation?
Sure. Sorry, I'll just pull it back up again. So it's Andrew Bray. I'm the National Director with Realignment. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. And now if you'd like to give your short opening statement, thank you.
Sure. Thank you. So yes, thank you very much, Chair, and the secretariat for inviting me to take part in the hearing in this inquiry today. Realignment is an independent, not-for-profit advocacy organisation. Our mandate includes all forms of energy along with transmission and energy storage. And we recognise that a holistic and collaborative approach to regional developments is needed. We take a practical approach to leveraging the renewable energy boom to deliver the best possible outcomes for regional farmers, landholders and communities. We advocate extensive involvement to elevate the voice of communities. And we work with renewable energy developers to deliver best practice, community engagement, community funds, and to earn the acceptance of the communities they work in.
Mr. Bray, can I interrupt? I'm sorry to do this. Could you just maybe lean in a little bit closer to your microphone? We're losing every 10th word or so. And just maybe start the form, previous sentence again. Thank you.
Okay. I'm getting an echo for some reason, which is possibly connected.
Sorry.
That's all. We... Sorry, where am I? Yeah, we work across the eastern seaboard states, from Queensland down to Tasmania and in New South Wales. And particularly lately, we've been working in the central west of Ranares and south west Rees. I'm delighted to have this opportunity to appear, as I was on leave during the previous inquiry's hearing. But we did make a full submission to that inquiry. So it's impossible to overstate the urgency of New South Wales progressing key transmission projects to connect the new generation that will replace our aging and often failing coal-fired fleet. All aspects of critical transmission projects need to be determined in a way that delivers, and here I'm echoing my predecessors, procedural and distributive fairness to local communities at all times, but especially during a cost of living crisis, this needs to be balanced with the needs of energy consumers. So we don't know of anything that's happened since our submission to the previous inquiry that's changed our main argument, which is that there are major equity and environmental challenges to undergrounding of transmission. And that underground lines are significantly more expensive for energy consumers and have environmental and land use impacts from the extensive digging for the building and ongoing maintenance requirements of buried assets. Are you picking any more of this up now? Are you able to hear me okay?
Yes, sorry. Yes, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're still going? Yes?
Yes, yes. We do, however, see some limited applications for undergrounded solutions that involve lower voltage lines over relatively short lengths. For example, the connection of multiple generation assets to the transmission network through underground lines would involve limited cost uplift that would spare local communities, so-called spaghetti connections. However, undergrounding of high voltage backfiring lines across hundreds of kilometres would be a recipe for unacceptably higher costs and unacceptably longer delays than New South Wales' experience with transmission projects. So I might just leave my comments there.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Great. We'll move to the Smart Energy Council now for your opening statement, Mr. Heaney.
Thank you very much. I might just give a quick introduction to the Smart Energy Council and hand over to my colleague Connor.
If you could just pull the microphone closer to you, please.
I might just give a quick intro and then hand over to my colleague Connor. So the Smart Energy Council... So the Smart Energy Council is Australia's not-for-profit peak industry body for renewables. We include things like solar, batteries, wind, green hydrogen, finance, large-scale development, manufacturing, and we encompass the whole renewables ecosystem. The council has over nine hundred and fifty members and sixty-five years' experience in the sector, having been established by the photovoltaic pioneers in the nineteen fifties and sixties, who built the world's first solar panels and solar hot water systems. The Smart Energy Council understands Australia's transition to a net-zero emissions economy will deliver massive benefits to business and the economy as a whole. It'll deliver jobs, attract investment, innovate, and make our economy more productive and competitive, all while delivering a safer climate. Achieving a strong economy and a safe climate is not just possible, it is critical if we are to confront the challenges of our future. Our nine hundred and fifty members provide us with real-world empirical insights into the problems of the renewables industry and offer solutions, drafting, testing, and help us to advocate for those solutions.
Thank you very much, Mr Heaney. Just give a flavour of the work of the Smart Energy Council in relation to transmission and its planning. So first of all, the Smart Energy Council is a stakeholder in the federal work that's going on in terms of planning a new system for accessing transmission. Obviously, as we go from predominantly a fossil fuel-powered grid with a few small number of generators to one which has thirty, forty generators, the way in which projects access transmission is becoming extremely more complex. And so that that process is going on at a federal level. And the Smart Energy Council works with industry and across broad stakeholders on industry policy for renewable energy projects. So last year, the Smart Energy Council worked on the Capacity Investment Scheme with the Clean Energy Investor Group, Climate Action Network Australia, the Battery Council, and a number of other stakeholders. So our work is effectively looking at how do we accelerate at the pace required to meet our emission reduction goals as well as our renewable electricity goals as well, at both federal and state level. And so the Smart Energy Council is an advocate for an energy transition that is, one, at pace with emissions reduction, and two, one that keeps the costs at a reasonably levelised rate compared to where we are now, and noting the New South Wales electricity roadmap, which set out and promised a reduction of energy bills for New South Wales consumers. A just transition also includes a transition which transitions in a way which keeps costs, you know, at or relatively close to current levels. I'll finalise the statement there.
Thank you, and Ms McElnay, you've got your hand up, is that because you also have a short opening statement to make?
Yes, I have a couple of examples to fill on.
Just very quickly, because we do need to get to committee member questions, thank you, go ahead.
Okay. In my research and experience, two of the key concerns communities have in relation to above-ground transmission are aesthetics, impacts to land and environment. I've found that local involvement in projects and a level of agency helps to get better project outcomes while reducing these concerns. In the New England Renewable Energy Zone, where I live and work, a number of local conservationists, ecologists, landowners, and First Nations and Indigenous holders have been concerned about impacts of the transmission on an already fragmented landscape that's been created primarily for agriculture. Initially concerned was largely the lack of opportunity to participate in planning. We helped to convene meetings for people who shared these concerns. Together, the group developed recommendations to guide the planning, construction, and management of new transmission lines, and trialled new participatory processes to feed local environmental knowledge and data into the planning process. Another cause for concern is the gap in research. What are the effects on different plant species when canopy cover is removed? How can clearing a seventy-metre-wide corridor impact the movement of native animal species? And if negative, how can this be mitigated? Better research and information will minimise environmental impacts and concerns. The challenge moving forward, however, is there's no agreed standard or accreditation to give people confidence that whichever company wins a tender to construct the infrastructure will have a commitment to environmental protection mitigation beyond the minimum required. In North America, the Right of Waste Goodship Councils provides resources and accreditation for utilities. In Europe, the Renewable Grid Alliance does this. Sound environmental practice is needed in transmission here in Australia. How can we bed these practices down, and could government play a leadership role? I can leave it there.
Thank you, that's very useful, we'll go to questions now from the opposition, Mr Fang.
Thank you, and thank you all for making yourselves available to appear today. I'm going to start with you, Ms Gerard. I note, having done a little bit of reading online, that you've been working in the space around, I guess, the community, like a just transition, and I think that's the phrasing that's used to describe your work in relation to the energy space. What is your view around where there is a project that impacts communities, such as an overhead transmission line, that the community is simply against? How do we find a just transition when they're prepared to accept something like an underground line, but they're being told that it has to be overhead?
Excellent question, and I posed this just recently to another panel of researchers. So I think fundamentally what Community Power Agency advocates for is improved transparency in decision-making processes, improved community engagement from skilled practitioners that can go and engage with those community members about the infrastructure that's coming, about the options that are available to them, making sure that they're informed respectfully about what the options are, not dumbing down engineers coming down across and not being respectful to people's local knowledge, but really ensuring that they have a sense of agency and that they're being brought along on any decision-making process. And I think what you're saying is that a just transition also needs to take into account landholders that might not want energy infrastructure, is that the crux of it?
Effectively, yeah, I mean, I certainly, you'd be aware that this is a second inquiry on this issue, and that the first inquiry heard from a lot of stakeholders, in fact, we went to places such as Chumit because of Humelink. We've been in Nilquen because of the transmission lines there, and we've been up to Armidale to have a look at the work that Energy Co will be doing up there, and also we've heard from, you know, central west Orana as well. Now, here are a group of stakeholders, as in community members, that are, they know more about overhead and underground transmission lines than I've ever known a group of stakeholders to know. So they have agency, they have been taken along the ride, they've been consulted to death, and they still are advocating for undergrounding of these lines. Now, where you've got informed, well-educated, considered stakeholders that are still saying, we don't want the overhead, we want, we're happy to have it, we know, understand why you need it, but we want it underground, haven't they met all the requirements that you would advocate for to say, they've made a considered decision and they still want this? It's then on us to actually work with them to actually have that undergrounded?
I don't think it's as simple as that, because there's obviously lots of stakeholders in this energy transition. You know, there's people that live in urban areas, there's people that live in regional areas. We have to make sure that it's cost-effective and it's fair and just for everyone, which means that there are so many different things to take into account. But I think the context behind that is that we're entering into this very rapid transition off the back of decades of inaction on climate change, and so the pace of this change is really fast, and therefore the greatest storytelling that should have happened, the community engagement prior to this kind of feeling like everything's being rushed, has been a real missed opportunity, and I think it's also happening in an, in a environment where there's a lack of trust in government, and so...
So, I guess if I'm extending that then,
Yeah.
Where you've got, say, metropolitan stakeholders, you know, people that are living in Sydney CBD, where we all are now, and they, they, they live in a concrete, you know, a concrete jungle, they drive their car, they, you know, they might use public transport. In order for them to be able to receive renewable energy from, that's produced in rural, regional parts of New South Wales,
Yeah.
we have to first have those renewable energy zones which are in rural, regional areas. We then have to build these transmission lines to get that power to here, so that people can save, and I've calculated it's about eight dollars per power bill, we, we are enforcing on communities overhead transmission lines to provide cheaper power for people that live in, in, in the city. Isn't that a abrogation of the overall responsibility onto people in rural, regional areas? Because they've got to carry the renewable energy projects, they've got to carry the renewable energy transmission lines, and in effect, the net benefit is basically going to metropolitan areas. Where's the benefit for those people that, that, who have been engaged with and consulted with?
Sure, I think that we're also not acknowledging that we need to rapidly act on climate change, and that what Community Power Agency advocates for is for greater benefit sharing in these regional host communities. We want to see local jobs, we want to see local procurement, we want to see engagement practices that are early and meaningful and genuine, and it might be that you have to have longer tender processes, engagement processes on route, and route choice. But fundamentally, I think that communities need to see benefits, regional communities need to see benefits from this change.
Mr Fang, I want to go to Mr Bray, who has his hand up?
Okay, I was going to come to Mr Bray in a second.
Yeah, but he's had his hand up.
No, I appreciate that, but my questioning's not to Mr Bray. And I will come to Mr Bray in a second. I know my time's very limited, but do you understand where the genesis of a lot of these problems?
Yes.
Is that, you know, you've got a lot of city dwellers telling rural, regional people that, you know, we're going to consult with you, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, you're advocating for doing more of that, but I don't think any more consultation or information or engagement with these communities will have them have overhead power lines, they want it underground. And it's simply a matter of cost now, would that be a fair assumption?
I'm not an engineer, but I don't think it's also just about cost, I think it's also about the
Feasibility?
feasibility of it.
Understood. I'll come now to you, Mr Bray. Realliance, do you have any connection with the Clean Energy Investor Group?
None.
Because we heard from Mr Corbell earlier, and he cited your, your submission to the previous inquiry quite, quite in numerous times throughout his submission. Did you provide any advice to, to the Clean Energy Investor Group around your previous submission? And have you done any work with them to provide them any advice, feedback, technical expertise into their submissions?
I don't recall, we do speak with the Clean Energy Investor Group from time to time, I don't recall if we had specific interaction about this report, that was some months ago now, so, couldn't say, but look, you know, it's, I didn't hear what Mr Corbell had to say before, because I wasn't logged in, but...
It wasn't that interesting, but no.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Bray, well now move to questions from the...
Can I, sorry, Chair, can I just, I wanted to, the reason I had my hand up before is I wanted to respond to the assumption that Mr Fang's first question around, and it's a framing that you hear quite a lot, is that regional people have to put up with all the impacts and only city people get the benefits? I think that's really a misconstrued version of what's happening, in that I don't question for a second that the impacts happen definitely through in the, in the regional area. But people who live in regional areas are power consumers as well. Regional businesses, energy, people who live in rural towns use power. So if, if power comes more cheaply because of this large-scale renewable energy infrastructure, it benefits all. And so, when, you know, so that while people in this region or that region all want routes undergrounded, I'd question whether the disgust that's been had with them, well, as power consumers, are you happy with the much higher costs of those solutions that you've extended?
Thank you, Mr Bray, I'll drop my first question to you, actually, I wasn't going to do that, but I will. So, do you also submit that the assessment process at the moment for transmission infrastructure during the RIT process, Regulatory Investment Test, I think is that, that would, doesn't take into account social and environmental concerns? Do you, speaking of cheaper power bills, there's a reason why it's reflected potentially as cheaper power bills, because it doesn't take into the social, into account social and environmental concerns? You're also critical of that, and do you believe that should change?
Yeah, we absolutely have been critical of that, and have for the last, since we released our Building Trust for Transmission Report a bit over two years ago. I mean, happily, I'd like to say there's progress being made in those, in those areas already. So the Australian Energy Regulator is, is allowing for extra community engagement costs to be passed through, for instance. So there, some of that work is starting to now happen. So, but I would second the comments made by the Community Power Agency reps earlier around that these processes need to be delivering procedural fairness and distributive fairness in those communities. And undergrounding needs to be as part of that discussion, so...
Thank you, I've just, yeah, thank you, I'll just turn to questions to the Smart Energy Council. Mr Wolf, you mentioned at the beginning something about a planning process at the federal level in relation to transmission. What consideration during those discussions, meetings, is being given to undergrounding? And could you, that's one question, and what else is being discussed and deliberated on in that area?
So thankfully for time's sake, there is, because the reform in terms of access to transmission is largely agnostic as to whether the transmission is above ground or underground, so it's a different kind of problem that they're solving in that particular working group. But in terms of the broader considerations, the, you know, the build of transmission isn't about lowering energy bills by eight dollars, and, you know, if you factor in the cost of renewable energy projects that get connected, it's a far greater impact. It's, it's a far broader problem that's been solved, and that is that if the transmission doesn't come in on time, not only do we have, let's say, maybe more expensive energy, we don't have enough energy to satisfy our demand. So it's, it's a security risk, it's a energy reliability risk. And so that is a very significant, and one of the more salient factors in designing the transmission access regime at the national level, is that getting this wrong, not doing this quickly enough, is a serious reliability issue. And we know that as climate change worsens over the coming decade, two decades, we have more heatwaves, more unpredictable heatwaves, the, you know, blackouts and coal-fired power plants shutting down more irregularly and more frequently means that it's a really serious issue. And I also just want to highlight that in New South Wales, the per-megawatt cost that is paid to communities is the highest in the country, as far as I'm aware. I might not have checked Northern Territory, so I could be wrong on that exact sort of putting New South Wales at the top.
Through what mechanism, just to, just to expand, when you say the per-megawatt cost paid to communities, how?
So in the New South Wales WID guidelines, which is backed up by So in the New South Wales um Wind Guidelines, which is backed up by legislation and regulation, there is a range of, um, I guess, community engagement uh conditions which projects have to go through. And in there, um, is, is a range of per-megawatt uh contributions that have to be made. Um, and that is, it's a very significant portion of the profits. And so the idea that this is uh, you know, some sort of transfer of resources and wealth and benefit from regional to cities um, simply is, is misrepresented.
Thank you. Um, I'm looking at Mister Roberts now. No. Um, okay, I might just continue just on that then, just to, um. So uh, is that, that um payment, if it directly impacts in terms of landholders impacted? Or broader communities in terms of councils? Um, how is it exactly paid out? And obviously, we can look at the, the document you refer to to get more detail.
Sure. Um, as far as I'm concerned, it's paid to the councils. Um, and obviously, they have a duty to distribute those. Um, obviously, there's also some payments for transmission on um, landholders' property. Um, and from various stakeholders we've spoken with, there's a real um recognition that having diversified revenue streams in a increasingly difficult agricultural environment with, again, rapidly changing environmental conditions means that for many stakeholders, having diversified revenue is actually um hugely beneficial. And so while some stakeholders are, you know, not happy with it, um, I guess at the end of the day, we are providing a reasonably basic commodity. Um, and if we were looking at something like water and water infrastructure and providing that at a reasonable price, you wouldn't change course dramatically based off, uh, you know, a very small group um opposing the way in which infrastructure is delivered, especially if they want that, that infrastructure delivered at three to 10 times the, the current cost. Um, yeah, thank you.
If the Chair's looking for some reference points, the new wind farm guidelines that have recently come out have uh, well, an extensive list of um community benefit fund requirements for payments to councils enlisted in those.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think that's the end of our questions. We'll go to questions from the government now. Mister Stephen Lawrence.
I might start with a couple of questions for Mister Bray if I could. Um, I was wondering, Mister Bray, could you give us a sense of the opposition in regional areas of the state to transmission infrastructure? An example of which is Hume Link. Uh, can you give us just your, your appraisal of the basis for opposition? And what sort of people or groups are expressing that opposition?
Um, I think that the first thing to say about the Hume Link, opposition to Hume Link is that the, the engagement that was done in the first, the first parts of that project were quite poor. Uh, and I think transgiving knowledge of themselves, you know, once you go out uh with the wrong information, you don't talk to the right people, you're not clear about what it is you're doing. Um, and, and also you, you come across as trying to hide things. Uh, you get people offside beginning. So I think that's, that's the whole problem, much more difficult than it should have been. Transgiving knowledge, they went through the internal review, um, they got Rod Stowe on board with that. Um, and I think it's, my understanding is that it improved it somewhat. Um, but nevertheless, that has generated a number of opposition groups down there who have been quite vocal. Uh, and I think that's, you know, I think they were quite within their rights to do so. I think they weren't treated, treated well.
Sure. And is the opposition come from landholders predominantly? Or has it come from broader segments of regional communities, uh, to your understanding?
To my understanding, uh, from landholders themselves, they're the ones who have the lines going through their property.
Yeah.
Um, and, you know, it's, it's, it's a considerable impostor, it would be an impediment to the farm today. So there's no doubt about the fact that that they are gonna have to make adaptations to it. Uh, and for some of them, uh, I think the $200,000 per kilometer uh rate was met after that gap began. Uh, so this is the payment for transmission landholders. So for some of them, that's going to be, make a difference. And I understand that it is. Uh, but for some, you know, I, I would prefer they just wasn't that infrastructure there to begin with.
And in terms of, sorry, Mister Bray, um, in terms of that opposition in the context of this debate about undergrounding, the above grounding, what's your understanding of the main concern that landholders have about above-ground transmission lines? Is the, is it aesthetic? Is that the main concern? Or is it some other issue?
Uh, I think you can, um, if, different things matter to different people. If you have a lifestyle block that you've retired to and, you know, you particularly like the environs around there, the aesthetic part of it might be, might be a bigger deal. If you're running a working phenomenon, you've got cropping operations that you have to uh change, you know, you'd like to do the irrigation differently uh to get around it, a power line, then that's gonna be an impediment. So it's a range of those different things.
Yeah.
Uh, and again, you, you've got to be having this conversation that takes all of those into account. Works out where mitigations are possible, works out where they're not. Because this is state significant infrastructure. So it's, it's a complicated issue and it can't just be. It needs to incorporate all the views on the ground, but it needs to remember the, the purpose of what the infrastructure is there for.
Certainly. Thanks, Mister Bray. I might just turn uh to the Community Power Agency, Mister Gerard. Uh, you were asked earlier by Mister Fang, um, essentially, it was suggested that look, the opposition to Hume Link, in his view, was informed and strong. And therefore, should we just accede to that opposition? Um, I'm wondering firstly, could you tell us whether you think that would be a reasonable approach to the issues that opposed here to simply say, well, the opposition is so strong from those directly affected that we should just should just underground it?
Uh, I think that we would need to have, I think that this inquiry is one part of greater transparency in decision-making and greater um hearing of different perspectives and different views. But perhaps mechanisms like citizen um democracies or other decision-making forums would um include a wider variety of stakeholders because that is just one stakeholder in this very complex energy system that we have. Um, I think that greater stakeholder participation in decision-making processes would be the next step that I would suggest.
Yeah. Um, that sort of preempts my question. And if I could put it this way, I mean, I suppose another way to look at it is to say, well, there's much bigger issues at stake here than that which pertain to any individual landholder. They can't possibly have a veto over such important public infrastructure. So on that basis, it just has to go through. And I'm just wondering whether there's a third way in your view. Is there another way where we can build social license around these sorts of projects and get out of first or second options as the dichotomy?
Um, I might let my colleague Heidi answer that, actually, because she's been doing some very important work on the ground in the New England Res. And she might be able to bring some examples.
Thanks, Eleanor. Um, I think that, and thanks for the question. I think that, I mean, it would be, what's critical, I guess, to discuss is the reasons behind these preferences of the, the landowners who've um suggested that undergrounding is their preferred option. And I suppose to just ensure that all information is on the table and that these means couldn't be achieved by, by other um mechanisms as well. Um, and to put their particular preferences, I guess, as, as others have said, uh, factor them in with, with other environmental, other stakeholders, um, other requirements as well to create a balanced outcome. But certainly, I think wherever we find that people have more agency, so ability to contribute and understand how their input factors into decision-making, we get people who are happier all around. So I think the issue is if, if people just are sort of given one or two options and but that's sort of seen as the only way, then it's difficult to actually find those kind of compromises that are needed.
Thanks, Heidi. I might just lastly go to either of the Smart Energy Council representatives. Where do you see the balance here in terms of the concerns of those most directly affected and the broader public interest that incorporates obviously a whole range of considerations, including speed of delivery and transition?
Um, I'll just check with my colleague Lee, if he'd like to speak to her. Um, I think I outlined some of the points in relation to that question, and thank you for allowing to elaborate. Um, obviously, in the past, we've had, uh, so I, first of all, the Australian environment is um very unique and special. Um, and our communities regionally are a significant lifeblood of, of the Australian economy. Um, and so um we do need to do better across renewable energy projects and transmission projects in, if we do want uh a timely transition of, and build out of projects. Um, and I think it would be great to understand the values behind um why they've opposed uh the project. Um, noting that they are very well-informed, they've spent a lot of time, they're very knowledgeable. Um, but that in of itself is not a reason to, I think, you know, if, if, if a particular stakeholder group is, has the time, money and education to stand up and, and, and push back against a project. Uh, I guess, um, which is, has a public interest. Um, that doesn't mean that the public interest uh should sort of be subverted beneath that. I mean, one idea you could look at is if a, if a community really is um, you know, genuinely against the project and it's not just because it's not, they don't have a sort of NIMBY, not in my backyard kind of view. Um, and there's, there's other really substantial reasons, including environmental. Um, and that, that community pretty much has so much respect for their own land and their own area that they want to, uh, you know, have a huge cost incurred on, on all energy consumers. You know, you could look maybe for some buy-in effectively from that community to say, look, if you're gonna, if you're gonna put on a huge extra cost to the public um, and you want your land protected despite the fact that everywhere else in the country, these lines have to go above land and, you know, for the, for the broader public and economic benefit. Um, I guess one way to test, uh, you know, potentially genuine um protest is, is to look for some contribution from the communities. I'm not sure how politically or socially feasible that is, but it's just a potential third option, um, if you're really looking for one.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're out of time. Thanks so much to all of our witnesses for appearing today. Uh, thank you. And we'll now call our final witnesses for today's hearing. Thank you. If we could start with you, please, name and position, title, and either an oath or an affirmation.
Corporation New South Wales. I solemnly and sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you so much. And Mister Kingsmill.
Thank you, Chair. Andrew Kingsmill, Executive Director of Network Planning and Technical Advisory at the Energy Corporation of New South Wales. I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Thank you. Uh, now, would either of you have a short opening statement for the committee?
Yes, sure. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Mister Hay.
Um, just a little bit about Energy Corporation New South Wales for the committee's benefit. Uh, we are a statutory authority. Uh, we were originally created under the 1987 Energy Utilities and Administration Act. And our role was to advise the state on the energy resources of the state. Under the Electricity Infrastructure Investment Act 2020, often referred to as the electricity roadmap, Energy Corporation was added, had a function. Energy Corporation actually didn't do anything for 30 years, but we were reenlivened and under the roadmap legislation to be the infrastructure planner. The role of the infrastructure planner is to act in the public interest. We're a not-for-profit, we don't, you know, we're a government entity. We have, uh, ultimately, we won't have a, a balance sheet, we're not going to operate uh electricity infrastructure. Our role is to act in the place of, of coordinating the investment in transmission generation and storage, principally in the renewable energy zones, but also what we call priority transmission investment projects, which are transmission investment projects that are needed for reliability to keep the lights on. So we look at those as a whole. As you know, the transition from the current fleet of coal-fired generators is in progress and happening rapidly. Though you have a fleet obsolescence issue with that fleet. The existing transmission lines were built to the existing fuel sources, which is the coalfields where the, where the, and the water areas where the coal, where the coal plants are based. The challenge for New South Wales is to replace over 75% of its baseload energy within 10 to 15 years. The CSIRO advice, which is the basis for most policy work in the national electricity market, of which New South Wales is a part, is that firm renewables are the cheapest alternative, particularly in New South Wales. Firm renewables consist of wind, solar and firming uh elements such as short, longer duration batteries, pumped, pumped hydro and gas. So what our role is, is to recommend the network solutions for uh the renewable energy zones in particular and the coordination of those with the generation that is going to come into those areas and the storage that will be in those areas and elsewhere. The renewable energy zones are like the new power stations in that sense, in an electrical sense. And one of the things that the Act really recognised, two things. State no longer has control in the way it did when the transition to coal-fired generation was done in the 40, 50 years ago. Does not own, and in those days, the state owned generation, transmission, distribution, retail and set the prices, and it also owned the coalfields. So now it doesn't have those interests. So the coordinations are much more uh inform, uh different ways, not, you don't have the ownership interest, so that most of the investment will be private sector investment. Our role is to recognise the roles of the community and the objects of the Act. Stress that obtaining the support, fostering the support of local communities, which is the way the Act refers to social licence, is a key objective of the Act and a key objective of Energy Corporation in recommending what are the right network solutions to deliver the energy transition. These renewable energy zones are so large that we have to take a view across the whole of the network in New South Wales. Many of you may be familiar with the network infrastructure strategy that we published earlier this year, which looks at the reses in the context of the network and the wider network in New South Wales and the priority investment projects and how they fit as part of the national electricity market. They're interconnectors with Queensland, with Victoria, with South Australia in particular. So um just a little bit about myself and Andrew. I've spent most of my career tunneling or digging holes in grounds in one way, shape or form. I've worked on infrastructure as broadly as hospitals, prisons and tunnels for electricity and for road purposes. Um, I've also been involved in rebuilding major cities and looking at other things like that, in particular in Christchurch in New Zealand. Um, I've been in the electricity sector for nigh on 30 years in different capacities. Andrew Kingsmill uh is a very experienced transmission power systems engineer and has worked uh in both network planning and network operations for all of his career. And he leads our technical advisory group at Energy Co, which assembles the network infrastructure strategy and then informs the scope and scale of the projects that we are tasked with advancing for the people of New South Wales. Just a couple of other quick things I'd just make. Just a couple of other quick things I'd just make in that opening statement if I may, Chair. We look at all projects on their merits and all projects are different. And perhaps one of the things I'd like to stress to the committee, transmission is not just poles and wires. And one of our projects, our signature projects at the moment is the Waratah Super Battery Project, which is a transmission project and will be for a substantial part of that asset's life. What that project does, and it's based at the old coal-fired power station site at Lake Munmore, and it enables the existing transmission network to be used at a much higher level of utilisation. So it avoids the need for build or, in this case, it's actually buying time for the need for some build to allow proper community engagement, which we've just commenced on what we call the Hunter Transmission Project, and proper planning with TransGrid and with AEMO. AEMO is the Australian Energy Market Operator, who sets the overall plan for the network in Australia, in the national electricity market, which is called the Integrated System Plan. So we look at those things in the round. So there is in the Waratah Super Battery, which by megawatts is one of the largest batteries in the world and will be completed in August 2025, having been commenced as a project in 2022. That enables the existing network to perform at a much higher level than it was currently performing to keep the lights on whilst other initiatives are planned and other investments occur. We also look at conventional investments in lines and so the renewable energy zones are like collector systems. They are there to collect generation and aggregate it and bring it to the points where electricity is used in a utility scale. They complement the New South Wales electricity strategy, which is an end-to-end strategy about rooftop solar energy efficiency, peak demand response schemes. It goes from the very point of production, whether that's on the rooftop or in a utility scale, wind or solar farm or a coal generator, and it looks at the whole system as, as a whole. And what we do with other projects like the Hunter Transmission Project, it's about the backhaul, it's about the backbone of the network to transport bulk energy. So we've covered the ambit of that and we're happy to sort of go through how we look at these projects and their specifics. We look at each community and it's, as, as we find it, we look at the landowners as we find them, we look at the electricity needs and the anticipated demand and use of electricity over time and how it serves both affordability, reliability and sustainability for the community over time.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hay. Let's get to questions about all of that now then. We'll go to Ms. Carter. Thank you for the opposition.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here today. I'm just interested what the relationship between Energy Corporation and the Clean Energy Investor Group is.
Clean Energy Investor Group is a peak body that works with other entities, but we work with everyone in the industry, whether they be market bodies.
You're members with them, you use them as consultants?
We're not a member, we don't use them as consultants, to my knowledge.
Okay, and, and who prepared your submission today?
We prepared our own submission.
You might care to look afterwards. Striking similarities between the way you discuss underground transmission between your submission and pages three and four of the Clean Energy Investor Group submission. So I'm wondering what the sources are, because the sources you've disclosed as your footnotes don't appear to give the source for your information about underground transmission in New South Wales.
We can certainly look into that for the committee. What I would stress and one of the other parts I should mention about Energy Corporation, we have an advisory committee that consists of members, very specialists in both communities and the sector, and sectors as a whole. So our submission was prepared by my own team of experts with advice from external parties, our consultants and others, and also with the review of our Energy Corporation, Energy Co advisory committee, which consists, the key members of that for this purpose are Dr. Keith Turner, who's an international expert in transmission engineering, and Dr. Alex Wanhouse, who was AEMO's system planner for many years.
So perhaps a lot of crossover between your advisors and Clean Energy Investor Group, which is just a matter of interest, I think. Any formal connection with the RE Alliance?
No.
Because they appear to be very closely linked in terms of using each other's submissions with Clean Energy Investor Group and by extension with what we've got in front of us today.
We work with all bodies and there's a lot of common material and our website is the source of many people's information as well.
No, thank you very much.
Our job is, our job is to put information out there and you'll see quite a lot on our website, so may well be that others have seen what we've put out there.
Okay. I notice in your submission at page four, you talk about undergrounding and you talk about a bending radius. What's the bending radius of overhead transmission lines?
That might be a good opportunity for Andrew to sort of come in with the more technical side and we've probably got some points here, some exhibits here that might help demonstrate that point with the permission of the committee.
What's the bending radius of overhead transmission lines?
So overhead transmission lines can actually turn corners quite sharply with the right civil design, so we don't talk about...
So is it a bend or is it a corner with an overhead transmission line?
Well, with overhead transmission lines, we don't talk about bending radii typically.
Is that because they can't bend around natural features like trees in the way that underground cables can?
No, they can bend around natural features, absolutely.
And, and so the alignment that's proposed bends around natural features to accommodate natural features?
It, it can, so when we...
It can, but does it?
That would be specific to each location along the line route.
And your recommendation is that it should, that if it is overhead power lines, it should be bent to accommodate the natural features, so to have minimal impact on stakeholders?
So we consider a range of considerations when we set a route. That includes biodiversity type impacts, that includes the topology of the land, the constructability, the physical, the impacts on land use, so all of those are considerations. Yes, it includes bushfire.
What's the, what's the bushfire risk of overhead transmission lines compared to underground cables?
So the bushfire risk, and we're talking here particularly about extra high voltage overhead transmission lines, and that's, I would define that as voltages of around 330 kilovolts and above.
And the risk?
So 330 and 500 kilovolts. A 500 kilovolt line has never started a bushfire in Australia and I note the evidence provided by...
Could I just stop you there? How many 500 kilovolt volts are currently in Australia?
So there's a number in New South Wales, I'd have to get the quantity, but off the top of my head, in the order of seven or eight and a number in Victoria.
You wouldn't know what the kilovolts wires that started the bushfires in Maui, would you?
I don't, I'm not familiar with Maui. But, so...
And, and the risk for underground cables?
So I'll just finish talking to the, the bushfire risk for overhead lines. We noted in our submission, the evidence provided by Andrew Dyer to the previous inquiry, where he used the term virtually zero, and that came from some work that he did with the Energy, Energy Safe Victoria. What I would also note is that where bushfires have been started previously, for example, the tragic Black Saturday bushfires in Victoria, they were on far lower voltage assets and in some cases, or particularly in the case of the King Lake Fire in Victoria, that was around a particular technology called single wire earth return. A lot of those issues are less issues at higher voltages where the easements are wider, where the lines are higher off the ground and where there isn't as much encroachment from trees on the line, so very, very low. In terms of underground cables, the bushfire risks, I understand, is also virtually zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming today. Just looking at some of the projects that have been, I guess flagged by Energy Co recently, so looking at something like Central Westerana, where you've got a res there and then you've got to get that power from that Central Westerana res to, say, somewhere like Sydney or, you know, major metropolitan areas to, to a major population base. You've said that you're in charge effectively of the network design and, Mr. Kingsmill, you're effectively the person that does that design. Have you looked at, looked at undergrounding those, those lines? Is it, if you have, what is it that precludes undergrounding for you?
Yeah, so precludes is a very strong word and I think as, as Mr. Hay said, we, we take each project on its merits. But Chair, if I may, now might actually be a good time to table some samples and I can talk about some of the physical characteristics of underground and overhead. So an underground transmission cable at extra high voltage, I'm doing this.
Literally.
That's quite heavy. Sorry about the linen.
That's okay. So this is a sample of underground transmission cable at extra high voltage at 330 and 500 kilovolts. It's quite a large asset, it's very specially manufactured. So the interior of the cable is a copper core, can be an aluminium core, but this one's copper. Outside of that, there's a very specialist cross-linked polyethylene plastic layer, which provides insulation, and then there's an earth and a sheath around that. These cables weigh approximately 40 kilograms per metre, so the installation of them is quite a significant civil undertaking. They involve excavations and I recognise that the inquiries received a number of opinions on how big those excavations are and how wide that corridor is, but I'll come to that in a moment. But they also have handling requirements so as not to damage the cables, which can be quite expensive to replace. In contrast, an overhead conductor, which this is a sample of, is much smaller, it's much easier to install with a traditional winch type system. Certainly the construction of the towers is different between the two, but hopefully this gives a bit of a visual and committee members are welcome to inspect these if they wish after the inquiry.
We might do that a little bit later, I've just got some more questions I need to get through and my time's almost expired, so if that's all right. So where you've got, I guess, the, the need to move energy, have you looked at undergrounding from, say, Central Westerana into the bigger metropolitan areas?
So we have and we've done some calculations on that around the size of the trenches, the number of cables, the distances they'd need to run, the volume of spoil that would need to be removed and the cement slurry backfill that would need to be poured in that, and they're summarised in our submission, but we can provide more information on that if we need to.
Okay, is it only a matter of cost that precludes the undergrounding from being an option, or is there other things that preclude your adoption of undergrounding over an overhead system?
There are a number of, of other factors, so for example, particularly in environmentally or culturally sensitive areas, with overhead lines, the towers are spaced sort of 400 to 500 metres apart, and so it is possible to route lines around those areas or to minimise impact through those areas, even such that if the topology is right, it's possible to route them so that there's no need to actually clear the vegetation under the lines, for example, if they're routed on, on two sides of the valley.
Okay.
We've considered things like truck movements on local roads with the amount of spoil that would need to be, to be removed.
It's also important, Andrew, to stress that you can't just replace the soil around this thing, you have to place them, they have to be spaced a certain minimum and you need, one of these conducts much less electricity than one of these, so you have to space them further, you have more of them, they have to be deep and they have to be encased in heat resistant material on which nothing will grow.
I should add, sorry, I realise that time's short, but very briefly, the other consideration we have is that the capacity of an underground cable is less than that of an overhead line at extra high voltages. So the transmission lines that we are looking at running overhead in Central Westerana in New England are good for four gigawatts per line. An HVAC cable, the highest at 500 KV today is 1.8 gigawatts per line, and an HVDC 525 kilovolts is 2.6 gigawatts per line. So you actually end up with more cables to get the same capacity.
Unfortunately, my time has run out, I've got so many more questions. It may be that we have to ask you to come back at another time because we're just not going to get to the number of questions today.
Thank you. So just to, just to check with that cable, is it, is that one what would be an HVAC or HVDC, did you say?
This particular cable is an HVAC. An HVDC is not dissimilar. It's marginally smaller, maybe 10% smaller in terms of diameter, but a lot of the properties are very similar.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just wanted to firstly just ask about, when we talk about bushfire, particularly in the State Development Committee inquiry into this issue, we largely covered where the overhead transmission lines can cause fire and we didn't really talk about the impact on transmission infrastructure, transmission network infrastructure. And I think that's an important aspect, given that we will be facing more intense and severe bushfires and fires as, you know, the years pass. What's the, what has Energy Co done to future-proof, if you like, potential overhead transmission lines? The Black Summer bushfires just absolutely tore through the transmission, overhead transmission network, both in Victoria and New South Wales. The transmission infrastructure in lots of parts of the state, the impacted parts was down for, for quite a few days. Are you firstly aware of that? And then what is Energy Co doing to ensure that overhead transmission lines can withstand the types of fires that we know we are going to experience again and again?
Absolutely. So in the previous fires, there was certainly a small amount of infrastructure that might have been down from that time pending repairs, but the large backbone, if you like, of the New South Wales electricity system was returned to service and continued in service. I realise there were some repairs to be made after that, but the, the backbone lines themselves were serviceable. In terms of the measures that Energy Co takes, we look at easement width, we look at how we route the lines in terms of proximity to bushfires, we engage contractors to do natural hazard assessment, which actually looks at bushfire intensity along the line route, and that will involve consideration of vegetation, it involves consideration of topology, how fires move through the area, and then that's one of the considerations that we use when we develop our corridor. And so where possible, we would try to avoid forested areas in some respects, in other respects, there's advantages to going through them, but the easement widths, the access and those natural hazard assessments are the measures that we take.
We can provide further details of just how little interruption there was to the major transmission lines during the fire season, it might be worth the committee seeing that.
Yes, that would be, that would be very useful because I don't want to get the sense that the importance of this has been downplayed in any way. It wasn't mentioned by TransGrid at all during the last inquiry, despite numerous questions about bushfire, but there is a whole report that the regulator has done into what happened to the energy transmission network during the Black Summer fires, a whole report into TransGrid's network and how severely it was impacted at that time. You'd be aware of that report, I take it?
Just confirming you're referring to the Australian Energy Regulator?
Yes.
We do have a few regulators.
Yeah.
So I will have a look at that, but we'll come back with the details, so.
And so there were, so in terms of bushfires, there is less risk, am I correct, in undergrounding? If we're looking at, you know, trying to ensure that the network is able to continue providing electricity for residents during emergencies, there is less risk in undergrounding than there is in overhead transmission at the height of something like Black Summer bushfires?
It's probably a question where it depends on the definition a bit of less risk. I wouldn't have said there's materially less risk from undergrounding. The modern power systems are set up with effectively a self-healing, as a system, a self-healing type function, where if there's a disturbance to a line and that could be a lightning strike, it could be a fire passing under the line, that the system will try to self-heal. And if the, you know, the hazards pass, then the system would self-heal. So I realise that a number of submissions have made the point that overhead lines are more susceptible to those natural hazards. What I would add to that is that for most of those natural hazards, they do self-heal.
So when you say self-heal, so TransGrid's transmission line network within the burnt area, so for example, there was 596 wood pole structures, when you're saying self-heal, do they withstand the fire and...
So if the line is physically intact and capable of conducting electricity, the power system will switch it back on after the hazard has passed. If there's physical damage to infrastructure to the extent that it's no longer capable of conducting electricity, then obviously that would be unsuccessful. What I would like to investigate, and I'm happy to revert to the committee on this, is the extent to which those statistics were purely about transmission infrastructure or the extent to which they were about sub-transmission or indeed distribution infrastructure, because I'm aware of much bigger impacts at the distribution.
Thank you. Go to my colleague in a second. It's, it really is around making sure, you know, as much as possible, the electricity stays on. During the Black Summer fires, there were 12 trips of 500 KV transmission lines and it says this is significant, as these are not only part of the main backbone of TransGrid's network, but are also the tallest and largest structures on the network. They're saying that so many trips occurred on these assets indicates the magnitude of the severity of the fires and the volume of smoke being produced at the time. Again, something that, that's a positive for underground transmission, is it... Again, something that, that's a positive for underground transmission, is it not, and should not be factored into?
I think there's a couple of things we might tease out here. One is, is the continuity, we're talking a lot in electricity about just continuity of service, which is different from damage. So a line may have impacts that are later needed to be repaired because a fire's passed through it, but did it lose service? And the trips you're talking about, what you'd need, what you'd need to look about is the duration of them, they may be momentary, many of them will be relatively short duration. So we'd need, you know, there's quite a nuance to this, and I would point out, you know, one of the things with these cables is they can't follow terrain, and often we're talking here about quite undulating terrain where these kind of fire risks are pretty high. Much of this, where it's not following the terrain, may be effectively on bridges, because these are too heavy to hang on pylons, so they'll be lower and closer to the height of the fire if they're bridging a gap.
Okay, I'm conscious that I've got to leave time for my colleague, Mr Roberts, I'll go to, right now, I can ask you more on notice if I wish.
Yeah, sure, thanks Chair. You and I have obviously been reading from the same document, because I too have questions in relation to it. So page 15 of your own submission, last paragraph, "Underground transmission lines are typically unaffected by above-ground fires. Grass and scrub fires move quickly enough that the temperatures of the ground surrounding the cable is not raised significantly." Okay. So we go to TransGrid's own document, and I'm sure you've probably seen this and are aware of this, to which the Chair has quoted from, but these are TransGrid's own words. "In total, there were 12 trips of the 500 KV transmission lines, this is significant, etcetera, as the Chair has already alluded to. These are trips of the system. If it was underground, if it was underground, it's highly unlikely the system would be tripped at any time at all, according to your own submission."
Again, I think-
No, that would be correct.
Where it's underground, but what we're trying to say is sometimes-
Yeah, I heard what you said, I just asked my question, that's all. And I'm being, I don't want you to take that as being rude, but I'm on the clock and I've just got to get finished. Okay then, Mr Hay, you said shortly, a short period ago, in your own evidence here today, that nothing will grow above underground high voltage lines?
Very, very little of any merit.
Well, you just said nothing before, so now we've got something and we have nothing. And you also said, let's continue on, because the clock's running down, that you need special fill.
Yes.
Did you listen to any of the expert witnesses this morning at all?
No, I did, and I can take that question, Mr Roberts, if you'd like me to.
So would you suggest that those witnesses this morning intentionally misled their committee? Because their evidence is directly contradictory to Mr Hay's evidence.
No, so I think it would be worth correcting the record here. It depends on the capacity and the size of the cables and the amount of power to be transferred through them. So we're quite aware that with HVDC cables, and particularly traditional HVDC cables that aren't as large as the ones that we'd be talking about in the renewable energy zones, that it is possible to use engineered fill of local soil and re-trench that. Those cables typically operate up to a temperature of 50 degrees C, and so that's appropriate to dissipate the heat. For cables of this size and the 525 KV HVDC high capacity, they operate at temperatures of up to 85 degrees C, and so that requires a different thermal treatment. I think what you heard from the experts earlier in the day, and we would agree with this, is that it really is a case-by-case basis, we'd need to run the thermal software on the cross-section of the cable, but certainly my experience with cables at high capacity is that you would need thermal fill.
Well, that's, I take it that you should read their submissions, or listen to them, or read the transcripts, sorry, of their evidence from this morning?
I was watching this morning, I heard the evidence.
It's completely contradictory of what you said, but Chair, I noticed the time, and that's it.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Roberts, government members, Miss Savile.
Thanks, Chair. Thanks to you both for appearing today. My first question is to Mr Kingsmill. Could you tell us about your expertise in this area of undergrounding?
So my expertise is primarily in power system planning, operation, and asset management. My background prior to working at Energy Co was with the network business, TransGrid, in those capacities, and during that time managed a range of assets, including some underground cables. So while I was at TransGrid, we installed underground cables, we faced rating issues with underground cables where the spoil and the fill had deteriorated chemically, we faced end-of-life issues with cables, and we faced issues of movement in cables where they're joined to each other, which we had to remediate. So I've had some experience in cable maintenance.
And can you tell us about the transmission planning landscape in New South Wales? Who were the main players? And importantly, who has expertise when it comes to transmission planning and delivery?
Well, there's three planners for transmission and network infrastructure at extra high voltage in New South Wales. That's AEMO as the National Transmission Planner, and we see that most in the Integrated System Plan, TransGrid is the jurisdictional planning body, and we see that in their Transmission Annual Planning Report, and Energy Co as the Infrastructure Planner for Renewable Energy Zones and Priority Transmission Projects, and we see that in our Network Infrastructure Strategy. We joint-plan with AEMO and TransGrid.
And who has the expertise when it comes to that planning and delivery, would you say?
Well, I'd say all three organisations have the expertise in terms of planning. I would add that AEMO doesn't manage assets directly, and so that would be more network operators that have that expertise.
Thank you. Is there any expertise about undergrounding transmission lines in Australia?
Look, I think there is. There's a number of Australian engineers that are part of an international consortium called CIGRE, that's C-I-G-R-E, including one of your witnesses this morning, but other witnesses that work for engineering consultancies, sorry, other engineers that work for engineering consultancies.
And some of the evidence to this committee suggests you can easily put transmission lines underground. Can you explain to us why things might be different when it comes to 500 kilovolt lines?
Absolutely. So the size and weight and the physical constructability issues would be the main things that I would cite there. At these sort of sizes and at these sort of capacities and voltages, the physical logistics and the sheer size of equipment to be able to trench and then to bury and then to backfill is significantly larger than the smaller cables that you might perhaps underground down a street or within a wind farm or a solar farm. The manufacturing of these is specialist, it needs to be high quality to ensure there's no impurities in there, but also so is the installation of them. So these cables typically come on drums of between 500 metres and a kilometre, for the higher capacity ones, probably 500 metres. They're joined at the end of those sections to the next section by joint boxes that are about the size of three of these tables, so about the width and the height and the size of the side of the room that we're sitting on today. Typically, at extra high voltage, we don't have the capability in Australia to do that jointing, whether that's for installation or repair, and historically, we've sourced that from overseas and typically from the same countries that manufacture the cables, Japan, Korea, and the like. There is expertise in Australia at lower voltage and lower capacity cables at subtransmission and distribution voltages.
Thanks. Why is most of the new plant infrastructure in New South Wales proposed to be 500 kilovolts? And what are the benefits of this?
So there's two main benefits of at 500 kilovolt, of going to a higher voltage, and 500 kilovolts is the highest that we run. One is that the higher the voltage, the lower the loss for the same power transfer, and so less energy is lost from the sending end of the line to the receiving end of the line. The second reason is the capacity of those lines is higher. So I cited earlier four gigawatts for a 500 kilovolt overhead line. Typically, it's about one gigawatt for a 330 kilovolt line, perhaps slightly higher or slightly lower, depending on design. And so one of the things that we're conscious of at Energy Co is that if we go into a community to do these works, we want to disrupt the community as little as possible, and that means making the best use, the most efficient use, with the highest capacity use of the corridors that we can secure.
Thank you. Can you tell us more about the challenges of operating and indeed maintaining underground lines?
It probably varies a bit, and I do agree with the statements made earlier today, it probably varies a bit depending on whether they're HVAC or HVDC, but I alluded earlier to some of the physical characteristics. Cable movement can damage cables, it's possible for external interference, so, you know, horizontal direct drilling can actually drill into cables, and that's happened before and needs to be replaced. And some of the, some of the maintenance would be around testing, but if there is damage to a cable, then it would, major damage, then it would take similar construction to how the cable was laid in the first place, to remove a section, to replace the section, and to rejoin the section into the linear asset.
Okay. How long does it take to construct and procure transmission lines? And would undergrounding take longer?
The advice that we have is that undergrounding would take longer, in the order of two to three years than overhead. The full procurement process for an overhead line, we're talking, are we talking, once we have regulatory and environmental approvals, or prior to that? Once we have regulatory and environmental approvals, there's probably, and this is generalising, it depends obviously on the length and the topology and a range of things, but there's probably sort of a year to 18 months of design and site investigations and geotechnical work, and then if I was to give you an average, maybe 18 months to two years of actual construction for overhead.
Right. What are the environmental impacts of undergrounding transmission infrastructure?
So they're spelt out a little bit in our submission. Because undergrounding requires a trench and excavation for the full length of the asset, it becomes harder, it's not impossible, but it becomes harder to route that around environmentally sensitive areas, whereas with overhead transmission, where the ground disturbance is at the towers, it's more readily possible, and in terms of directional changes at overhead towers, it's more readily possible to minimise impacts through sensitive areas by doing that. I don't have a background in agriculture, but I do know, or has been reported, I should say, that in Germany, where they are undergrounding a cable, farmers have raised concerns about the effects of heat from cable on the soil, and the effects of heat from cable on their crops.
Interesting. In terms of the restrictions on farming, are there restrictions for underground transmission infrastructure on farming, noting what you've just said, obviously?
So there would be restrictions, and I think to clarify the statement that was made earlier about what can grow over an underground cable, it would be things that don't have the potential to damage the cable, so anything that's got deep root systems, anything that, I guess, is, I mean, there needs to be access to the cable at all times in case repairs or maintenance are needed. So really, I mean, there's probably a slight bit of latitude on this, but my answer would be grasses typically would be-
So not a rice paddy or anything like that?
Look, we would-
Something requiring a lot of water?
We would, we would seek to completely avoid irrigated areas, unless there was no other option.
Okay, thank you. In terms of the, the size of the trench, there's been some varying evidence about what the size of a trench would be for a 500 kilovolt line, what is your submission of the size of the trench and the easement?
So the easement for the cables would be in the order of 30 to 40 metres, it really depends on the capacity and how many cables, there are some examples in our submission. That doesn't include construction easement, and so typically for construction, our advice is that you would add, or the advice we've received, sorry, is that you would add probably another 30 metres roughly, but those estimates vary, some slightly less, some slightly more.
Thank you. What are the cost implications of overhead versus underground transmission infrastructure?
Look, most of our information on that comes from publicly available reports that we've researched, and so we would be saying in the order of three to 10 times. I'm aware that there's estimates that have been prepared that have been slightly less than that. What I would say is that those estimates are for lower capacity cables, the more we would need to run to renewable energy zones, and we've spelt that out in our submission, the difference between some of the lower estimates, and then some of the capacities that we get from the physical infrastructure, that would be more commensurate with what we'd run to renewable energy zones.
And what would the impact on consumer bills be of underground transmission infrastructure?
Look, we haven't done a calculation at this point as to the impact on consumer bills, but we could do that and revert if that was of interest to the panel.
Yes, certainly would be, yep. Did you have any questions, my friend? No? Okay. In terms of the HVAC and HVDC infrastructure, can you just briefly explain the difference between these and why you're planning them for the res, in terms of the rationale?
I can, so HVAC, but I'll try and answer the question, then feel free to follow up. HVAC is how most of the power system operates today, with the exception of three DC interconnectors between states. It reflects, the reason why HVAC is used is typically rotating machines naturally generate AC, and so because our power system's historically been developed around rotating coal-fired generators and hydro generators, that's why HVAC is used, and motors, traditional motors, not so much the modern motors, would typically use HVAC. HVDC is a different technology, and newer generators such as solar panels will generate HVAC, HVDC, sorry, but I can fill that in more later if you'd like.
Thanks. Great, thank you. Thank you very much, both, for appearing. That's the end of our time today, so thank you. I'm not sure whether anything was taken on notice, but the secretariat will be in touch with you about that, if so, as well as any supplementary questions that members may have. So I thank you, and that's the end of today's hearing as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.